We'll call the Eastline Board of Selectmen Special Meeting to Order for the Purpose of Budget Review. Today is February 19th at 5:30 PM. If you all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike Mason, why don't you take us there?
Pledge of Allegiance, civil flag of the United States of America and as to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to make sure you knew it. Passed. IT, we have several budgets this evening that we'll go through. Department heads are here, as you can see. We put our public safety all on the same night. First responders, all these different various departments are all on the same night for a reason because they're all tied together in many different ways and their budgets are tied together too. But also, the first thing you're going to see is IT. And the reason why we're putting them all together is they all have a shared need in IT upgrades. So I think to start the conversation, Joe, are you starting us off tonight?
Yes.
So Joe Burgas, you know, is Public Works, but he wears several different hats in this town. And IT does come under that for now. Joe, how would you like to start the conversation tonight?
Well, as you're aware, Mr. Nickerson said that typically I come to the Department 109, which is the budget we're talking about tonight, the IT budget, usually is talked about in the Public Works. But as you've been also told in, I think, the letter when the budget was submitted is there are issues going on with IT and that's why we're here tonight. To have a better understanding of, because we're kind of falling, I mean, the issue is we're falling behind in emergency services support of IT. So to have a better understanding where we've been and how to get where we're going, I'd like to have Bill Shear sit down and just kind of give you a quick history of where we're at. And then I'll come back.
I'll just do it right here, Mark. Believe it or not, I've been here for eighteen and a half years. Yeah, it doesn't feel like that. I started in 2001 and when I came here, we basically had a computer in the back room that was operating as a server, sort of an email server. And it was, believe it or not, it was operated by Dave Funk and a high school kid that would come for an hour or two in the afternoon. So basically, there was no IT department back in 2001. And then, this was when Wayne Frazier was in office. And in 2002, Wayne made me the IT person to add to my other hats that I had at that point in time. Shortly after that, that became slightly overwhelming. So Carmen Ames, who's our current IT person, she came from an IT background. She's a mid-level IT person and we brought her into the mix and moved her up into the IT position. And at that time, we basically had, in the town, we had the Town Hall, we had one or two computers at Parks and Rec, one or two computers at Senior Center, and a maximum of four computers at the Police Department, which was across the parking lot. You know, we had standard 2004 stuff, email printers, town department software for the individual assessors, tax people, office products, basically 2004 stuff. We had no idea at that point that the fire departments and dispatch had anything from an IT perspective. A lot has changed since then. Right now, we have, we now have a private police force, which has 20-plus computers just in the police station alone. They have cameras in their cars, they have new dispatch software, we have public access television via Atlantic broadband, laptops in the cars, we have a PSDN, Public Safety Fiber Network, connecting all of the public safety buildings. The fire departments have their own complex IT infrastructure needs. And I'm hoping that the chiefs can stand up and give you a brief overview of the complexity of their departments. The town side has grown, but not quite to that extent. We have the nutmeg fiber internet, which gives us VPNs, virtual private networks, to our satellite departments, Public Works, Community Center, and a couple others. We have network copiers, new versions of everything, Office 365, voice over IP phone. So the Town Hall side of things has moved forward a little bit, but it's not really that much different. On the other hand, the public safety has grown leaps and bounds. So what has recently changed to bring this to light? We've lost some institutional knowledge. Dick Morris and Chris Taylor basically built the IT infrastructure at dispatch and had a large hand in the firehouse IT stuff. Police Officer Roland is about to retire and he does a lot of the IT at the police station. A few years ago, we started a contract with Star Computers to give us a certain number of hours for a certain number of dollars. This helped when the Town Hall, when we had something too complex to deal with here, we called Star, they helped us with it. And they also basically led the charge of bringing the Police Department up to date and handled most of the things over there. That contract has since doubled and right now, we're looking at next year, we will not be able to do with what that contract has in it. So basically, the police, the dispatch, the fire, they've all taken different paths to get where they are to the now, to this level of complexity. And the public safety departments have also morphed into an essential system where 24/7 coverage is now going to be needed. Those guys are going to talk about that shortly. The Town Hall has grown to an extent, but nowhere is near the extent that they have. And so basically, in these last, well, I've been here for eighteen, so sixteen years, we function with very little funding. Basically, everybody pitched in, all the Chris, Dicky, the police, we pitched in and made everything work like we always have. But we've come to a point where this model doesn't work anymore. So the public safety, if any of the chiefs would like to stand up and just give a quick overview of the complexity of their system? Because I actually don't know it at this point.
Nor should you.
Thank you for having us. Just to kind of touch on the police dispatch, emergency management side of things, you know, our systems have become far more complex than they were, as Bill said, even several years ago. The 24/7 nature of the work is critical and that starts with your dispatch center. So as everyone here who would call 911 in any type of emergency, that dispatch center is critical to not just dispatching the police, but both fire companies and the ambulance in any emergency. They have to be up and running and everything they have relies on computer networking to get that job done. So just to kind of run through a list for the police department, we have the IMC system, which runs the dispatch and records system for the police and fire departments. You have the in-car cameras for our police department, the mobile data terminals for the police department, the collect system inside the police department and dispatch, IAFIS, which is the fingerprinting system, which goes off to the FBI and the state police, the interview cameras inside of the police department, web EOC at the EOC, the EOC share center, which allows us to put information through that system, the dispatch radio computers, which operate your radio systems in your town, the IP phone systems. You have the radio tower connectivity, because that has to maintain the system inside of town to have communications. The SCADA system for the water department, which allows dispatch to monitor those systems. The camera feeds throughout your entire town, which go back to dispatch center. So it's not just at dispatch, but it's all of the locations that you have cameras throughout your town need to be up kept by somebody with an IT background and knowledge. The networks to the fire department for information. So dispatch provides information into the fire departments for the reporting system, as well as call information as the calls are happening. Inside the police department, again, the scheduling software, public access channel through dispatch that has to be up and running, and also the nutmeg system, as Bill mentioned. That connectivity through the state fiber system that goes not just to your police department, but your dispatch center and your fire department. So from a police standpoint, we have a tremendous amount of IT needs, which are all, or most of them are 24/7 mission critical, that we really need to have, you know, somebody or the ability to have service when those are needed. And unfortunately, from a more consistent basis, we're having to call on Star Computer or our vendor after hours for dispatch when we don't have a contract with them to do that. So that causes, obviously, money issues, but also timing issues. While we have the fire chief speak.
Thanks, Chief. Pretty sure Chief Finkelstein hit everything just about. The only thing that I could speak for as far as the Niantic Fire Department, Eastline Ambulance, you know, using the CAD system and utilizing the internet and so forth, you know, we rely on the CAD system to generate those numbers and times and obviously, response times matters as much as staffing does. And with that being said, all those times are generated, they're put into our ESO reports, which is essentially our reporting for the Eastline Ambulance. So if you go on a call, you know, the time of call, the time we arrived, the time we transported, all those stuff is very critical, especially for critical patients and so forth and so on. They're all important legal matters and et cetera. So the IT part of that is coming from IMC into an ESO program, which is where our EPCRs, or our electronic patient care reports, go into. So all of that is through this network as well as our ENFRS reports. Our ENFRS reports are everything. It's a legal living document. Everybody that was there, what happened, when it happened, how it happened. We coincide with the Fire Marshal's Office, with the Fire Marshal Way, the recent fire that we had over in Chadwick Place. We started the report and he finished it. So everything's all integrated one way or the other. And like Chief Finkelstein said, you know, we rely on Star Computers a lot and, you know, we can get service pretty regularly or you're available, they're available during the day. But I can't tell you how many times I've heard and/or been in a situation where the times aren't generating into my patient care report because that function isn't working and they have to call Star and Star has to come in and they have to reboot the system or build another bridge to make sure that this is talking to that. And it's just, it's just, we're relying on them more and more and more. And it just seems to be failing more and more and more. So I think we really need some help in the IT department with that. I don't know, Chief Ricks?
Pretty much, they've hit all the topics. Mainly, just a quick background on the IT for the fire departments. The town has never put a dollar into our computer system, our internet. That's all come from the Eastline Ambulance. Our very first computers were donated from Millstone when they were getting rid of stuff. So the Eastline Ambulance is paid for, the program at dispatch that the cops presently use and is now the backbone between the Fire Marshal's Office and the fire department and the police, just like they said. We're moving closer, we're not using regular internet anymore. We're all in the nutmeg system, so it's a secured line. And except for the most part, the ambulance has picked up the cost of everything. But the town and the ambulance don't have 24-hour coverage for IT help. So anything outside of Monday to Friday, the bill's going to be a lot bigger if they do pick up the phone to help us.
Thanks, Chief. Which gets to our IT budget.
Yeah, so that gets back to, thank you for your overview. So this, the first question I would think you'd want to know is, why now? Why is this all coming about now? And believe it or not, we had, this all kind of came to light at a SIP meeting that was only about two, three weeks ago where, and one of the big reasons is the town does not have an IT director level person or just someone that's looking at a 10,000-foot level of where we're going and coordinate the whole effort. And it's part of what Bill Shear talked about, we're kind of, you know, duct tape, glue, bootstrap, you know, everyone worked together and then all this issues with all the technology. So basically, it all came up in the last few weeks, so we got a problem here. What are we going to do about it? So where do we go from there? And that's, part of it is kind of where we're heading with this and part of it is the budget. So where are we headed with this? First thing first, we talked about getting together an IT steering committee. This is not just going to solve itself overnight. We got, so we created an IT steering committee, who just had their first meeting less than two weeks ago. Just to let you know, the people on that committee is the Director of Public Works, myself, because, I mean, I have Budget 109, the Deputy Director of Public Works, because he's been dealing with IT for the last 16 years, the Town IT Supervisor, who has also been dealing with it for the last 16 years, the First Selectman, the Director of Finance, the Chief of Police and both Chiefs of the, both Niantic and Flannan's Fire Department, and also the President of the Ambulance Association, Dave Baer, who's also part of this whole equation as far as, because, you know, they contribute to IT. So we had our first meetings, they said, only two weeks ago. And we really have to almost, we can't just charge forward and say, this is the solution. We're really looking at, you know, how, mapping out all the network securities and all the stuff. And the first meeting was just to understand, you know, what the issues are and trying to, this is too critical, the decision for the town, to not get it right. The other thing that I wanted to just acknowledge is that, I mean, I also did reach out to the Board of Ed because, you know, you always hear, well, hey, are we trying to share services, are we trying to, you know, find? So I did have a conversation with Superintendent Schools, Mr. Newton, and I suggest, and they will be part of this steering committee, but they can't even come to the first meeting because we had to, there's kind of the town and then there's a Board of Ed. And we had to get our house in order to know all our issues and what our, how we strategize and then bring them in. So it's going to take another few meetings to get them in and then we can, so, because they have, I mean, you'll hear their budget, I understand they give you a number and not, you know, all the breakdowns that they'll tell, you know. But they have IT issues on their side and they're dealing with the same stuff. So it's very pertinent that we work together. The reason I bring up the Board of Ed and the steering committee is that we're trying to come up with a solution, but we don't have the answer right now. So we, what this budget is doing is, I'd like to say it as a bridge, is there's numbers thrown in this budget or put in this budget that are actually trying to address the need. I don't have the answers for it yet. We're going to be working hard on the next few months, the steering committee, but since this all came to light in the last few weeks, we're trying to expedite the pace. So one of the things, I want to show you too, hold on one second. Just in general, so because I've been, had the Budget, Department 109 Budget every year when I go over the public work stuff, is it came also to light of how woefully underfunded the Town of Eastline's IT budget is. So what I pass in front of you today, what you have now is three different towns. It's ours, it's the Town of Stonington and Ledger, and all three are similar from a population, from a dynamics. Stonington is actually very, very close in demographics and population and their IT budget is $390,000, ours is $158,000. One of the things that we did do in this process, and you're going to see in the budget that I present, is we're trying to pull, so there's some money in the Town of Eastline Police Budget and there's some money in the planning budget, there was some money in the Fire Marshal's Budget, that was all IT stuff. So what we're trying to do is, you know, one of the things is get this thing right, which we should do. And the second is to bring all the IT needs into one house, into the IT budget. So we're really truly comparing apples and apples. So, but this is a very big wake-up call and we didn't put Waterford, our Waterford budget is $800,000 for their IT. So, and ours is $132,000. So we're talking of, we're coming from way behind, we're trying to figure out the solution. So even though the Budget 109, I think, if you want to look at it percentage-wise, is up 87%. It's really, some of the numbers were brought from the other budgets and so it's very important we go it over to break down. Typically, you don't get an Excel spreadsheet. I put a detailed breakdown in your, I believe it's in your ed packet. That also, so we'll go over the normal budget sheets, but also the breakdown. So with that said, I'd like to jump into the actual numbers of 109.
So I want to highlight and make sure, I'd let you take a breath, and say that we're, what Joe said is, we have all these IT things in different budgets and we've noticed that over the years. What we've done is gone in and raked them, all the different departments, raked them all up and put them in this budget. So while you see a budget that went from $132,000 to $246,000, not really. What we did is we took some of the budgets to bring them in here. There is an increase here because we're going to, we see the need for more IT support from Star and Joe will go over that. But, so I don't hide that, we are increasing our spend for IT. But also, it's very important to note that we are collecting IT expenditures throughout the town and bringing them into this budget, most of them, not all of them.
Town government's all about transparency and this budget here is very transparent of where everything is, as Mr. Nickerson's saying. So, starting with the budget, we have the Personnel Services, which is just one staff person we already talked about, the IT supervisor. Now, when you start deviating into the services, I'd like you to, I'd like you to bring out the last sheet, which is the Excel spreadsheet.
It's supposed, Budget page is down, might be your last page.
It looks like this.
Maintenance Office Equipment Page?
Yes.
So, in the budget, in the current IT budget, not the proposed one for next year, but in the current budget, we have a line item called Maintenance of Office Equipment for $49,980. And this is exactly, every dollar is how it's broken out. So the current line, 215, is all the different elements of this. Now, the second line that says IT support to $22,750, because that's Bill Shear referenced before, that we have a Town IT contract with Star. That contract is $32,750. It corresponds $81 an hour, it's for 400 hours. The reason I'm putting 22 there is that that's one of these items where 10,000 was in the PD budget. So that's going to be, that's getting brought into here. The other things that we have on the existing budget, just so, you know, we have the website hosting, we have Sonic Walls, antivirus, spam filters. There's other things that come up in the course of year, the mail machines that we have in Town Hall. We have a little bit of training, tax collector software, PD email. And then, now, this was, if you recall, that this was the first year and it was a huge step forward as we came up to speed of the new Microsoft Exchange and Microsoft Office. I mean, we were challenged and have a very antiquated Exchange Server and all the other systems. So that got implemented and that's in this budget. So if you flip to the next page, so that's the detailed break-in. I started with what we had before because technically speaking, in this budget is only $50,000 more than what? And the $50,000 is the shaded line at the bottom, is the additional support. If I go through each of these, what I did from the transparency standpoint is instead of having a Maintenance of Office Equipment, is I broke it down into Town Licensing, Hosting, and Support. And all those numbers that constitute the $20,230 are all in the existing budget. Nothing's been increased. I just parceled out the $49,000 number that was in this past year's budget. The technical assistance of the town, the $22,750, as I showed you just now, that's already in the current budget. Other IT services, so the rest of the $5,800 is the other elements that we pay for out of that $49,000. So those three lines in that spreadsheet are how we basically constitute the $49,000. The only thing that's missing in that is the PD email was in that Maintenance Office Equipment and I'm listing that in the bottom with the PD. The next thing we brought in here in the middle, GIS annual hosting. So there was $7,300 that was being proposed in the planning budget for IT, excuse me, for GIS. GIS is an enterprise system. It's not necessarily benefiting planning, it benefits everyone. Anyone in the town can look up GIS, it's on our website. The Engineering Department uses it, Planning Department uses it, everyone uses GIS. Every town has it in an IT budget, it was in planning budget. So that's just a kind of correcting how everything pulls together. Then they have a GIS new and continued development. The one caveat with putting this budget together is I was getting these numbers from the different, the different department heads, kind of at the 11th hour. So I got these numbers from, like the GIS, from the Planning Director. So I'm still going to be working with that person, I'm not going, I will make sure that everything's implemented. But the reason I want to break these out is that if GIS doesn't, that number doesn't come out, someone has to get some more money because that's the number I was given, so. The last item, which is most critical, is the Police Emergency Management Fire Marshal's Office. This is, all these numbers, so the chief just talked about the MDTs, those are the laptops, the mobile data terminals in the car. They have that, that's a support contract of $15,000. That was in the PD's budget, no change to the budget, it's just where it's being placed in the budget. The IMC, as the chief talked about, is their records-based thing, that's the $12,789. That was already in the budget, so I was pulled over. The PD email was in our Maintenance Office Equipment. Then you got the cameras in the cars. The Fire Marshal budget had $2,000 in there for hardware, software, and $1,500 for miscellaneous expense. And I took that out of Fire Marshal and put it into here. I mean, this is a much more detailed breakdown and so, from a transparency standpoint, as I said, of everything there. The PD had the scheduling software, the policy software, and there's their $10,000 IT support. So the only last thing is the $50,000. And this is what we thought is, is that we don't have the answers, but we still have a $32,750 Star contract. We're asking for an extra $50,000 and we've had discussions, it's certainly not anything in stone, but the Emergency Services, the Ambulance Association, which you guys all know the relationship of the town and so that, has their own $33,000 contract to support dispatch. So the IT steering committee is trying to work together to see if we can pool all that money. We can pool all that money so that we can try, if it's an IT director we need, we could do that. If it's a higher level of consulting support, we can do that. But we have to still figure that out through the steering committee. And the last thing I want to say is that when we do have those discussions with the Board of Ed, I've been told that the Board of Ed also has money for an IT manager too. So instead of having, trying to tackle this thing in our own silos, if we, maybe we can work something out where you have some IT guru or whatever you want to call that, him or her, that person, and they can coordinate the efforts of Town Hall, the efforts of Emergency Services, and the efforts of Board of Ed. But we do know that the Board of, I mean, that the Emergency Services is where we're falling short. So no matter what, we need technical support and boots on the ground, people working on stuff in the Emergency Services. That's the biggest need. So that's the budget, that's the issue. I hope I explained it as best we could and if you have any questions.
It was important to bring everybody that is critical on this sheet to the table tonight. So you're going to hear their individual budgets, but you have to understand how integrated this whole thing is. I see a huge opportunity for IT shared services within our town with the Board of Ed, for sure. We shouldn't hire two IT directors in this town. One IT administrator, big umbrella guy, big thinker guy or woman at the top, handling all IT issues in this town. That said, I'm also in discussion, as you know, Chair of COG. COG is going to create a task force to talk about shared services within the COG. Because all these licenses that we pay for, $5,000 here, $10,000 here, and every town is paying these things. If we bundle them all together, the price is much cheaper. And why would we all be going out negotiating different contracts with the same companies? Because there's really just single providers in most of these things. So we're talking about that as well. That would be able, that would enable us to really enhance our security and our systems as well if we're locking in on the same type of system. That's in its infancy, that is one baby step trying to climb a mountain. But in the next year, COG will be taking on that task of looking at shared services for the region. I think that's one area that COG could do very well. When we talk about regionalization, because, you know, we would lose our touch and everybody would still have all the required computers and equipment and licensing and all the different tentacles that go out with that, but just be paying less through a master contract, looking at that. That said, staying in the town is staying on this budget right now and we'll be here for questions. I do see this evolving and this would be a primary thing to evolve in the next. The Board of Ed, as we know, we've heard about it, we've read about it in the paper, and they'll be coming forward to us to talk about their IT issues. They have a major infrastructure need over there as well. So we see that that's where the focus is right now and that will be our intention, is to try to bring it together. It's time to do that. Questions for Joe or any of the department heads on this issue? As you can see, it's been well thought out.
Yes, I got a lot of questions.
Yep.
Glad you brought this to light, actually, there's a lot, lot that you guys just talked about. I'm glad you brought it into one budget. I agree that we definitely do underfund this compared to other towns, communities. I'm surprised we got away with it for as long as we did. I mean, the way I look at it, I think we need an IT director and I think you also need a tech that can do all the hardware stuff. So, some questions I have, let me just start with Chief Finkelstein. You said your, your computers and systems are being maintained by an officer right now?
Well, it's kind of mismatched. So we rely on Star Computer very heavily for a lot of the networking. The in-car camera systems, Officer Roland, who was instrumental in bringing that system into the cars, into the Police Department, he has since its inception been the one that's maintained that. However, you know, that's one of those areas, it probably wasn't proper to have a line officer doing that because now what's happening, he's going to retire May 31st. We don't have a backup, we don't have somebody with the technical knowledge and abilities to really maintain that the way that he has. So it's just one of the areas where we see a deficit in, you know, not having IT people doing it, but trying to rely on officers to do that. And the same thing can be said for a lot of our platforms that we have.
Yeah, so I agree. That was my question, that you have an officer now, not on the street, maintaining computer systems and stuff like that, that probably should be all up in one system. You have a lot of specialized technology.
Yes.
Right. Do you get that support with Star or is some of it beyond, you know, expertise of Star?
No, I think, I think it's all within the expertise of Star. However, one of the limitations is the amount of hours that we have Star available, especially after-hours. So I think that's one of the things that we brought forward as a, as a need that we had, that the 24/7 coverage at the very least for us and, you know, beyond what the town contracts for with Star, we're finding the needs that we have and calling them in for our networks and our systems is exceeding, you know, what the town currently has. But I think it's well within their expertise and our experience that they've been able to really troubleshoot the large majority of our problems and work with our outside vendors such as IMC to try to, you know, mitigate the problems that are there.
Does that include the special likes, but does that include some of the specialized stuff in your cars?
Yes, yes.
Mark, quick thing, because that contract is $32,750 and they figure 400 hours, it divides out to about $80 an hour. When these guys call them at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, there was never the intention of it was $80 an hour or is there anyone from that Star even available? That's the dilemma.
No, that's a problem.
Not that they haven't been, just like Bill Shear and everyone here and all the-
Not that they haven't been, just like Bill Shear and everyone here and all the people have been trying to do, even STAR's been kind of working, but it's never been, it's not that they won't do it, they're gonna have to pay their staff to have someone available. I mean, what if someone goes out to dinner with us, I mean, someone has to be on call for these guys. That's, that's the difference is that, that's not the way the contract was set up and that's the thing that we kind of miss, but yet if we're gonna have a support kind, they have to be available twenty four seven. Someone has to be there to come in. That's, that's the problem.
Right, and have you talked to them about that?
We're working that out right now.
Okay, because that's a big, that's a big deal.
That's gonna cost money. And that's what we're negotiating with them right now.
Yeah, and the way I'm starting to see all this add up, kind of calling for potential internal help, that you'd have someone that would be working for the town that would know these systems with a potential backup.
Correct.
Right, you really need two people that know these systems.
Correct. Well, that's why you really got to look at the thirty two thousand we have existing, the fifty thousand we're proposing, and again, it's the discussion with the ambulance association, they are putting in thirty three thousand dollars. If they do contribute to this effort and then the town picks up the rest, now you're starting to get in the territory where you could hire someone and also still have support to do that. But, I mean, we could certainly put an extra hundred thousand. I mean, we're trying to solve the problem like Eastline does without slamming a number at it, but this has to be fixed. We're just trying to come up with the right solution instead of jumping the gun and say, this is the answer. We think that might be the answer, Mark, but we're not positive and let's talk to the Board of Ed. I mean, the Board of Ed's got money set aside, so maybe they can help this out, settle the solution.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a must.
So we're gonna spend the next half a year talking about finding the right solution and rather than just throwing a number here and not really knowing where we're gonna end up, we're gonna figure out, we're gonna see, look at the big picture, work with the Ambulance Association, work with STAR, work with the Board of Ed, and maybe even work with the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments and come up with the solution and that will be in next year's budget. In the meantime, this fifty thousand dollars is a plug.
It's a bridge.
It's a bridge, as you put it. We've gotten this far, we want to do it right when we do it, we want to implement it correctly. I think this is a reasonable approach.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would.
And you want more.
No, I want, I don't want to wait a year.
I know.
I don't think we could afford, the sooner we get people in-house that know these systems, the better off we're gonna be, the better off we're gonna be able to solve problems, better preventative maintenance. There's a whole lot of stuff that goes with this, there's a lot of systems. So this person, if we do hire, it's gonna be pretty well versed.
Absolutely.
You know, and then that's not even talking about an IT director. I mean, you need someone that's gonna be, you know, turning screws and in the.
Another must.
And the IT, I mean, at some point, I'd like to sit and talk to you, because I'd like to know what our whole IT infrastructure plan going forward is with cybersecurity and stuff like that.
We had to start with what it is now.
Right.
There are some people, STAR, the first, just so you know, the first meeting STAR was invited to the steering committee. They should not be on the steering committee because this is a town-led steering committee. However, they are our support up to this point, so they came in there, we started, just started, just touching the edges of what that whole layout is, the whole infrastructure and on map of what everything is, but that's, that's gonna be another meeting. And then another meeting, and then we need to have a meeting with the Board of Ed. So this is gonna take a while, so we're not trying to drag this out. I mean, I would agree with Mark, this is not something, this is a bridge money. If we can solve this thing come like, you know, July, August, September, but we can't just rush this, it has to be done right, we have to, and so the fifty thousand, we might need more money, but we don't know exactly what we need. We just have a money amount in there right now as a bridge, we're gonna start working with this committee, but we're gonna work with the Board of Ed, we're gonna try to figure this out. I have a strong feeling, and I feel more comfortable because I talked to the Board of Ed, that this might work for them and they've set aside money. So if you add up the money we have in STAR contract, the money that the emergency services have, the extra fifty thousand and what the Board of Ed has, now you're talking of placing all the assets in the right place.
Yeah, the schools have to have the biggest network in the whole town.
And they have a major, they have a major contract, IT contract, it's my understanding it's over three hundred thousand dollars.
We're gonna take through all of them.
So, so that, we had to get into all that with them and that's obviously their budget, but they were very interested in this conversation. They think it's a huge help to work with the town.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
So, I mean, this discussion goes way beyond this budget. And, you know, you talk, we talk about, we're looking at this budget, but, you know, we're mentioning the Board of Ed budget, but it's all the town's money ultimately. It pays for everything. And, or the taxpayers' money. I think we need to get really way on top of this. I think we should have maybe a subcommittee. I'd like to be part of it, Mark, if you want to join in. And we have to come up with a global solution that's going to satisfy the needs of the entire town, that takes advantage of duplicity and trying to reduce that. I think, you look at these other, you look at Stonington, you look at Ledyard on this handout, you know, their model is a information technology supervisor or manager with a support person. You need two people that can handle the problem and be backup for each other. I think we're overly dependent on STAR, sounds like they're doing a great job and have helped us out a lot, but we can't be in that dependent type of situation. If there's an emergency or breakdown in any of the major systems in the state or the country, no one's gonna be here to help us. We have to have our own technology in-house in this town that works for the town, that's gonna be there to support us. And I think we've been lucky so far, we've had a few things that have happened, we don't need to bring those up, but we gotta get on top of this and, not a year from now, we gotta get on it. And I think this is a great idea, putting all of this in one area of the budget so we can really look at it and understand it and assimilate it, but it's time, it is time to get on this.
The IT steering committee, so we met less than two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Our goal was that let's wait till the February nineteenth comes and goes and we're gonna meet again like in the next week. So whether, you know, if a subcommittee wants to meet with that group, however that, however the Board of Assemblymen wants to do that, but we are gonna be on top of this. We, we've done a lot of conversations, spent, I mean, this was one of those, okay, drop everything, we gotta figure this out. So where we come in the last three weeks is actually, so we're not sitting on this thing, we're gonna solve this. I've already talked to, I've already talked to the town of Stonington, I used to work there, I've talked to the director that's there, now I know exactly how, that director is in the police station. His office is in the police station, he also has an office in the town hall and he has, and he has a person that's a technician and a help desk person that's there that's doing everything else. That's, that's the model. The chief also was the mayor of Ledger and he knows all the, how that's all set up. So with his other towns, we can reach other, we're attacking this right now to solve it, we're gonna solve it as soon as we can, it's just, it'd be almost reckless to just say we know what the answer is because we're just getting into it. And so that's, that's our whole thing of just not saying that we know what it is. It's a very important subject, one of the most important things in the town and we'll get it fixed.
Great. Well, if I can serve in any way and help on any committee changing.
Well, we'll let, we'll let Mark know how you guys want to deal with that.
Yeah, I'm the same way.
I got a couple.
Yeah.
So, long overdue, thanks for getting it to this point, but I think this is the first of many steps that need to go. So a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. I don't see any hardware in the budget. Is that in other department budgets?
You're talking computers?
Hard, any hardware that needed to support the IT services the town provides.
See, the SIP is not, we're not talking about the SIP tonight. And the SIP puts aside ten thousand dollars a year for computer upgrades and fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, I don't have in front of me for certain, of putting it.
Five for servers.
Okay, that's five every year, but we're putting aside money in a CNRE because we had the issues with the servers. So with the computer upgrades, every year Carmen Ames has a list and she goes over with Bill and they have a list of every computer in town, how old those computers are, and we cycle them. And we've done a pretty good job of cycling those computers. I want to say, we get about four or five years, is it something?
Or at least.
So, so that, that capital, I mean, that, that hardware issue is there. The one, the thing that falls behind and we do try to cycle the, we do try to cycle the police station is just the evolution of the police force from, from, you know, you know, the resident trooper to new police force to all the things that they have now, that's what we've been struggling to keep up with capital because we're not over there, us being Carmen, Bill and I, we're not over there every day. And that's what came to light is the chief and police force needs, so well, well taken, but there is money in the capital side from a computer and hardware.
The thirty three thousand from the ambulance, where does that come in as a revenue? Because it's not in this budget.
It's not, it's not.
It's an independent contract and they work on their stuff and.
So it's separate from town?
So that pays for, the thirty three thousand, and they can tell me if I'm incorrect, covers the dispatch and it covers everything in the firehouses. But everything outside of that, every, all the, anything that with the police department is the town's contract. So the, the ambulance association pays for dispatch and the firehouses.
Yeah. Dave Baer's here, he's the president of Eastline.
And they just pay for it, we don't get the bill. So it's not a revenue because we never see the cost.
So, can I interrupt? So whatever our services utilize, whether it's the ambulance, the fire department, kind of was talking about before, anything that our stuff touches your stuff, we've taken care of with Eastline ambulance. So that bills, that's where that's taken care of and over the course of a couple of years, about thirty three thousand a year is about what we've been dealing with. So it could be higher some years or lower, but on an average, it's about thirty three thousand dollars a year for our support, for our hardware and for all of our stuff that we've supported at the dispatch center when they needed a server or et cetera. So all those things, that, that's where that number comes from.
Okay. And of course, you know, that thirty three and the fifty seed money that you're looking in this budget, to me is grossly understated for what we need to get to eventually and I, and I know you recognize that and as the committee, steering committee works. My only other concern, and I don't mean to insult, but a lot of this we heard tonight has been homegrown over the last sixteen years. I'd like the evaluation as the steering committee gets going, do we need to bring a consultant in? Or do we still want to just rely on town staff and STAR computer as the only input to what the long-term best plan for both the town and the school would be? I appreciate what you're trying to do, I know it saves the town money, but I don't want to end up with homegrown again that we have to talk about again in three to five years. It could be way off base and what you guys are gonna go do with STAR is gonna be world class, but I'm not so sure without some outside potential influence or even review of what your recommendation would be, that we may not be getting the best we can get at, of course, at the best price. So just consider that.
Well, one answer to that is, I don't want, and I've known Dave and, from STAR computers, Dave Lewis, if anyone knows, I mean, grew up in town, went to Eastline High School, but very smart guy, and we've already had these conversations. It might be at the, at the end of the day in a year or two or something like that, they not, might not be part of this equation, we have to figure it. So we're not locked in that this is how we have to do it. I do appreciate, and if more money is put in there that we can have a study done, great, it's actually less stuff for us to do, but we've already had conversations with other towns, so however this steering committee, the first Assemblyman sits on the steering committee, whichever we do, but we're actually at the kind of infant stages of where we're gonna be and if that's a consideration, we're more than willing to do it. We're not trying to patchwork something, we're trying to get it right.
And the reason I bring it up is I've seen the tremendous amount of work that Chief Finkelstein has had to do as part of the public safety building and all the tentacles that he's trying to pull together with the state. And he's the police chief, he's not an IT technician or a director. And I don't want to have futures town staff be stuck in that position going forward, whether it was Bill for the last sixteen years, the chief for the last eight months, or someone through with three years from now. That's my only concern and I, please, I'm not saying you're going in the wrong direction, I just want to make sure we keep our eyes open and we go after a professional approach and to the right level of IT support and the right level of technical knowledge as we make decisions. That's all.
I, if I may, I know you want, we've got to move on, but I echoed that. I mean, I've sat there with you at those meetings and I, it's very difficult for someone that has a particular focus to cast them into the world of IT and trying to figure all this stuff out. And it's, I don't think it's fair to, we have some great employees in this town that do wonderful things, people in this room, but the complexity is expanding beyond what the average person can absorb. And at some point, you have to get the pros here that that's all they do and without casting aspersions or in any way, I mean, I think we all appreciate very much the job that's being done here, but you guys need some help and we gotta get it and it's our job to figure that out.
One of the troubles is gonna be is this is a very good, strong market right now. So whoever that person is, is probably employed and is probably not even thinking of coming here. So that's gonna be the challenges. It's not like you're just gonna pluck that person because they're sitting, oh yeah, that would be a good job. So we, it's easy to say, hard to do, you gotta get the right person in there, but let's like, you know, we're gonna have to put together a job description, we're gonna have to figure this out, we're gonna look at the dynamics of the Board of Ed, is it gonna work, it's not. But, and we'll go out and get a consultant if that's, that's what it takes, I'm all for that. It seriously puts a little stress back on it, but this is the way Eastline staff does it, we just figure it out and we're not trying to do some homegrown solution, we're trying to make it work and lasting. That's why, I mean, look, we set up a steering committee, that's, that was the best decision. Let's get, we have a great work relationship with our ambulance association, we got the chiefs in there, we got Dave Baer from the ambulance, and we got, we're off to a good start in two weeks about having this conversation. To be able to put this, I kept saying, this budget's at the, it's eleven fifty nine and we're putting this budget together, you know, it's like these pieces are coming together.
I'm not concerned about the budget, you know.
You're concerned about the future focus and I get it.
It goes way beyond the budget.
Yeah.
I, I.
Kevin.
Yeah, because, you know, IT is as important as electricity is now to towns and every, pretty much any company that works right now. And, you know, we hear of other, we've heard of Boards of Ed, we've heard of towns where they've had to pay ransoms because they're being locked out of their computers and so forth like that. And that's the one concern, when you mention who's on the steering committee, you're talking about some excellent people, but do we do, want to look at early on a needs analysis? To have, bring, maybe not hire that director, but someone come in who's a consultant or who's basically an efficiency type person says, okay, we've identified what your concerns are. Someone who does this for a living, looks at cybersecurity, looks at the best way to move and get some type of a report from somebody who's an expert in the field. Just, you know, appropriate a small sum of money, come in and tell us, what do you think our concerns are? And this is a person who does this for a living and they're on the cutting edge of all the newest technology, all the newest concerns and so forth like that. That's the only one concern I have.
Fully support it, I mean, but I do appreciate you said one word, appropriate funds. We're doing it on duct tape and glue. I mean, this person is not gonna be in the budget of a duct, duct tape and glue, so we'll have to figure out, get a scope if it meets the purchase and buy, if we have to like ask around or we just get someone, there's dynamics to that. However it is, if that's the direction and that's what we should do, we'll do it, but we need funds to do it because we do not have it in a hundred thirty.
I think what you're hearing Savo say is, we don't want you to have to do it with duct tape and glue.
Right.
That's great.
That's just it, if you, if you can identify a need for, you think, an analysis, then it's up to us and the Board of Finance and maybe not even from budget for it, you know, maybe a special type of appropriation out of, you know, find the funds for that. But to get it done so that we know going in from an expert, someone who's, does this for a living, what we need, that's the only concern I have.
I heard you guys说得 it clear.
What I'm hearing from everyone up here in almost an unanimous voice, Roseanne, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have comments.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think we're starting off with this correctly. I commend them for forming a committee. We know our town. Somebody coming from outside may know New York City, but they don't know Eastline. So I think this is the right place to start and the right way to go for us to take a look at what we currently have and do an analysis. We have nine buildings to maintain, I think closer to ten with the police, with the substation, eleven buildings to maintain and everybody's doing something different.
Yep.
And. And
Yes.
I see both sides of the picture. It is, we have spent thousands of dollars on hardware for the school systems, and every day teachers go in, and they don't know if they're gonna be able to teach the lesson that they prepared, because the internet is down, because Infinite Campus is down, another program that we've got's down, and at the last minute, you're scrambling because you've gotta do a substitute lesson, or the equipment is so slow that the students are frustrated because they can't get their work done, because the work, we don't have enough power. This is a huge problem, and this is really the time to address it, particularly with our new police station coming online, we want to make sure that it's done right, and I think we have, we have a long history of having talented people in this town who look at the needs of our town, and then if we want to spend the money and have somebody come in and look, look over the work and give us suggestions, but you're right, the people aren't out there, they're in high-paying jobs. You're not gonna get somebody who's gonna come in here for twenty thousand dollars and look this over.
No, you're not.
And give us recommendations, so.
Well.
But in the meantime, I think our huge, I think our number one concern is the emergency management, and being able to respond to crisis situations, and having them be in touch with people twenty-four hours a day so that they can do the job that we count on them to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. I think you're hearing an overwhelming show of support for what you're trying to accomplish. I thank you all, all the department heads who are already putting so much in. Mr. Daigle, I think was echoed by Mr. Cunningham, suggested maybe we don't just Band-Aid and duct tape this thing for a year, but maybe more money should be put into this budget for consultant work, or for a more professional overview. We're doing it, we're doing it great with the task force, but with the task force, if we get halfway through the year, and we're ready to say, okay, it's time to start implementing, maybe we wouldn't need a consultant. So I don't know, in the next couple of weeks, we don't vote on our budget until March fourth, if there's, if there's some investigation you can do, Bill or Joe, about what that might cost to do a study, and I would suggest it would be the school and the town, to do an overreaching study on what our, how this department should be set up, I think this board would be willing to support that, so we do it right, and we do it the first time.
Do you want it assessed to towns' needs, priced, assessed to Board of Eds, or, because if you put, if you said the Board of Ed too, that doubles or triples that number. So, because the Board of Ed, and it's my understanding, and I've had good talks with Pat Lynn, I've talked to the superintendent, it's ironic, they have the exact same issue, if not worse, and I went to them to say, let's figure, let's fix this, and they were very excited to do that, it's just that we're both doing the same thing, and so, I will come up with pricing, but if your request is to look at the big picture.
I think it's a big picture.
It's gonna be a big number.
I think it's a shared services thing, I think it's with the Board of Ed.
And I think a needs assessment is a place to start.
Yep.
Let someone interact with all of the departments, what are their needs, then they can identify what the shortcomings are, then they can identify what the best approach is to address those shortcomings and move us forward.
That's, that's great. I did send out a survey, IT survey, to all department eds this week, I'm doing everything I can, as well as Bill, as well as the chiefs, to try to do this, I get, I get what you're saying, but we've already started that process of getting, you just said assess the needs, we're starting to do it, but that's just a start, we'll finish it.
Okay.
Just before we, I know we gotta go on, I just, I don't want to leave the impression that we don't appreciate very much everything everyone's doing here, I mean, we really, really do, you guys have done more than anyone would expect, and.
I'm probably, for sure.
And thanks for bringing it to everyone's attention, because it's well overdue and much needed.
And I'll just add, bringing someone in from the outside is, I think is a good thing, because there's a lot of things we probably don't know, there's probably a lot of things where technology's going in the future that somebody from the outside could actually guide us with, and so we could put together a good plan moving forward for the next ten, twenty years.
If anyone on the board has any ideas of who you might think, or any ideas, please send them to the first selectman, I'll reach out, but if you have someone you're thinking about, please let us know, because right now I have no idea who that could be, but we'll do some research.
Okay, and just for a point of reference, I work at a, you know, high-tech engineering company of about a hundred and twenty, we have four IT staff just in our garland office, like, we are way, way behind the curve on this.
Well, we are.
And we don't have the urgency.
That's the way Eastlime is.
I know, but we're, but you have, but you guys have stuff that's like life or death.
I understand, I just.
So, so, so thank you.
Sometimes you don't feel like you can come in front and double your budget.
No, I agree.
Because we hear flat budgets, flat budgets, but this is one of those ones, it doesn't matter, thank you, Mr. Daigle, it doesn't matter what the budget is, we gotta fix it.
We gotta fix this.
You all have day jobs, and we don't want to overburden you.
And forget something that's gonna be good for the next ten to twenty years, because the world is changing so fast.
Right.
We'd be lucky if whatever we come up with lasts for five years. It's gonna be an ongoing, big expense.
Yeah.
It's life in the twentieth century.
Thank you. Any other questions on the IT budget? We understand it fully.
I'm behind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
We'll work on that. Dispatch comes up, Chief Finkelstein inherited this, lucky you, we have the dispatch budget. That's budget number two fifteen.
Thank you.
No, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Good evening again, I want to thank you for having us here tonight, I also want to thank you for combining emergency services into the same night, and I don't want to speak for the other chiefs, Director of Ambulance, or the Fire Marshal, but we are trying to work very hard to be a much more cohesive unit in the Town of Eastlime as representing emergency services and understanding our shared needs, and I think you're seeing that with the IT, I think you'll see that in several places in our budgets, where we are constantly in collaboration together to try to give the best product to the Town of Eastlime, but while also being efficient with our, with our needs. So, what I've handed out to you is kind of a summary of the police services, but also as we move to dispatch, so if you go to the second to last page, and what I handed out to you, just so an overview, I think one thing, and I'll speak for myself, that we've done probably a very poor job over the years of doing, is really describing and explaining what we do. And I think from your standpoint, it's very important that you have a true understanding of what your services are doing inside of your community, and how that relates to the budgets that are before you. For dispatch, we have six full-time dispatchers, and currently about five part-time dispatchers. The full-time dispatchers work rotating shifts right now, of five days on, two days off, that changed last year for, for the eternity of dispatch, they worked during the day, during the week, and, or, sorry, during the week, they worked all three shifts, but they didn't work weekends, they didn't work holidays. We obviously have some holes in the schedule, and that's not really how emergency services work, so we worked very closely with the union to change the schedule, to get a kind of a rotating schedule, which seems to work a little bit better, it cut the part-time shifts in half, generally we had ten prior to this, we went down to five shifts per week, which is definitely an improvement. For your staffing, during the day shift, you have two dispatchers, evening shift you have two, and the midnight shift you have one dispatcher on at all times. So just, that's an overview of your dispatch center and how that works. So if we move into the budget, we're looking to maintain the six full-time dispatchers, one area, area, excuse me, that you will see a change in what we're proposing is an increase in the overtime. One of the realities unfortunately that we are recognizing, and we're not alone in this, other towns have the same realization, the part-time workforce is harder and harder to maintain staff of certified dispatchers who are able and willing and available to work a multitude of shifts. So we're having to many, many cases, fill those shifts with full-time dispatchers on overtime. Understanding in dispatch unfortunately, what has to happen is, you have to have somebody there, you have to have the staffing, we don't have the ability to not staff a dispatch shift. So that's why in overtime this year, we're actually recognizing an increase, and we're trying to accommodate for that, and that's simply because of the inability sometimes to find our part-time dispatchers. Other than that, most of the budget inside of dispatch stays the same, except for contractual raises that exist in that, so I don't know if you have any questions on the dispatch budget as presented?
I just have one quick question, what's the difference between the, oh, the adopted and the amended?
I'm sorry, you always go first, so go ahead. Guys. Mr. Salerno?
Just, what's the difference between the adopted and amended columns, Anna?
The purpose of the amended column would be for changes that were made in the budget, specifically when we solve, resolve a union contract prior to the current year's budget being adopted, we would show the amendments in the amended column.
Changes since it was adopted, that we've authorized.
Correct.
Remember when there's a outstanding union contract, we put money in the contingency wages, and then we move it over later in the year, and what she does is then, you know, update it, so you can have a fair comparison, so it doesn't look there like they're getting two years' worth of raises.
Yeah, because I know it's a five point nine five, and amended is three point eight six.
Right.
So that's the one we should be looking at, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Kevin.
They didn't get an increase of three point eight six, they got an increase of two point, what was it, there's a two point two five, or two point five? Two point five, and the differences are, I don't know why, probably something to go to step, oh, step increases.
Well, that could have something to do with the timing of hiring an additional dispatcher.
Right. Kevin?
Yeah, Chief, on the page we talked about dispatch staffing, you mentioned there's one on the midnight shift, which there is, when you move into the new building, is there a plan to go to two, because here again, that person's also gonna be interacting with the public, if you're on midnight, someone comes in the door at two o'clock, and you're talking at the window to somebody, especially if someone's coming in in distress, and now you've got phones ringing, and officers calling for, you know, for, you know, whatever, that could be, I could see that would be a problem. Even right now, if, you know, if it's two in the morning, and your midnight dispatcher is walking through someone with CPR on the phone, and now all of a sudden you've got another incident come in, I mean.
Unfortunately, there's not, and I agree with you, I think one of our biggest vulnerabilities as a town is the single dispatcher on midnight shift, in order to get to that coverage of two dispatchers on twenty-four seven, we in theory, we'd need nine full-time dispatchers rather than six, that's the model that would cover all of those days, so, you know, trying to stay within the budget that we have, or the increases, we've added two over the past two years, remember when we started two years ago, we had four dispatchers, we've increased one each of the past two years, again, I would wholly support going to two on at all times, I think it is the correct model, I think it's the best model, unfortunately, there's financial considerations I think that limit us from doing that, because it would require nine to get to that point. But I think, you know, eventually, every town should be having two dispatchers, there's so many rationales and reasons for having that second person there all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this budget? Pretty straightforward.
Okay, so, if you, if you look into your packet, again, I think, I think to frame the police department, we really ought to talk about our mission, because our mission as a police department is service to our community. You know, the mission of the Eastlime Police Department, to ensure the safety and well-being of all citizens, visitors to the Town of Eastlime, it's accomplished through a positive relationship with our community and effective policing strategies, and on a day-to-day basis, we're trying to improve that, we're always trying to learn from our experiences, but also to increase the service we're providing to our communities. So currently, we have twenty-four full-time officers, that was increased by one effective January first and last year's budget, we were approved for a half position, which now is actually in effect, and that officer was hired, and we have one part-time officer. The part-time officer contractually works two four-hour shifts per week, and that is a directed assignment. So we have the luxury of having that officer, those two shifts a week, and being able to say for those four hours, we are going to direct you to a certain task or function that we see a need to do, and I believe it's important to have that directed policing, because it allows us to try to better address some problem situations that may arise, and obviously we have twenty-four seven coverage to the Town of Eastlime. Our current staffing, we have myself as the chief of police, Sergeant Masek as the administrative sergeant, we have six patrol sergeants, twelve patrol officers, two detectives, one officer assigned to the schools as a challenge officer, one officer that's newly gonna be assigned into a task force for narcotics, that was the justification for hiring the new officer in January, and then the one part-time officer. So again, I think it's important to have a framework of what, you know what we have now. Currently, the Town of Eastlime, with a pretty voluminous square mileage, we have a minimum patrol, which is very low, and I think this is important to recognize, minimum patrol in this town has not increased at all for many, many years. You have two officers and one sergeant as your minimum patrol. I think many times, that's woefully inadequate to handle the call volume that sometimes we get, especially during the summer months, so that's always something that's on our radar, looking for ways to bolster and increase that, but unfortunately, generally in the summer, we were able to do that with the DUI patrol through a state grant, most towns have been cut from that grant, so we will no longer have that extra patrol Fridays and Saturdays, so now we don't have the ability to bolster that, which, which will factor in later to part of our conversation. Officers work a contractual schedule of five days on, three days off, and nine and a quarter hour shifts.
It's been seventeen years, I, we looked that up, it's been seventeen years that we've, we had a three officer minimum staffing, and has not changed.
Some of the stats for the town, we had seventeen thousand and three calls for service this past year, eighteen hundred and twenty-two vehicle stops, hundred and fifty-three criminal arrests, four hundred and eighty-nine criminal investigations, and two hundred and forty-eight motor vehicle accidents. On top of that, if you, if you remember back over the past, you know, year and a half, over a period of seven months, we also had a carjacking, a homicide, and two fatal accidents. The reason I point that out is, large incidents such as that certainly put a strain on our investigative resources, the ability to effectively do that. I will say, without question, we were highly successful in all those investigations, I would definitely applaud the efforts of our officers to do that, at the same time recognizing as an administrator, you know, with a small agency with limited resources, it becomes difficult when you get more and more serious incidents that happen. So it's definitely something that's on our radar to be able to address those more effectively. What are our largest complaints from our citizens on a day-to-day basis? Motor vehicle complaints and joy activity. Those two things drive the complaints that come to myself and my administrative staff of, this is the things that we see in our community we want to address, we all hear it with traffic especially, more radar, more enforcement, but that becomes more and more difficult when you look at the numbers of twenty-four officers, seventeen thousand calls for service a year, the time that they're able to spend on the side of the road running radar, when the reports, the investigations, the calls for service are racking up, it's very difficult to spend that time, so that becomes a difficult venture. One thing we did this past year, if you recall in the spring, I was able to, for several months, put extra patrols out for motor vehicle enforcement, very positive feedback in the community, a lot of visibility, showing that, you know, there was an officer out there in the spring months of summer approach, doing more motor vehicle enforcement, which I think, you know, leads into a lot of things I think we need to do. We also know Eastlime has a tremendous amount of events, from Celebrating Eastlime, to the Light Parade, Hartford Marathon, triathlon, road races, we are requiring very often to have mutual aid, and I want to make sure that we have an understanding from a town standpoint, that in order to make these work, our staffing is at a level that we have to have other towns come in, and understand they do that for free, they do not charge the Town of Eastlime for that service. So, that regional effort that the first selectman talked about from the COG standpoint, we also practice on a daily basis or a very frequent basis from law enforcement, we rely on our mutual aid partners, be it for that mutual aid for our events, which by the way, they love coming to Nyannix, so we kind of keep that hospitality going, but it could be the K9 program, it could be mutual aid for calls that we have. It's very important to maintain those relationships, but we also have to understand it's a very give and take relationship we have to have. The Marine Patrol, we have two marine assets, one is shared with Waterford, that is a regional patrol boat which was purchased off of Gramp, that is out there to do the patrolling of the Eastlime and Waterford waterfronts, as well as the Eastlime Police Boat, which is specific to ours, that is trailered, it's now, through generosity of one of our marinas, given a slip for the summer, but allows us to rapidly deploy to missing kayakers, missing swimmers, things that are adrift out in the water, when the regional boat isn't out there. So those two assets are extremely important, and I just want to make sure that's pointed out to you, because that factors into the budget, especially with the Marine Patrol. Special patrols, we have beach patrols and Main Street walking beats in the summer that come out of our general budget, that's important, I think, for our interface with our communities, the beach associations are very appreciative of that, we have meetings each year to discuss the needs and wants of those communities, but also that Main Street Patrol, having that officer on Main Street during the summer months, sporadic times, is certainly helpful. We also have Parks and Rec patrols, that Parks and Rec pays for out of their budget, and the Black Point Beach Patrol, which is paid for by that association. But just an understanding of where our officers are deployed, all of these are on overtime and extra hours, so they don't cut into that normal patrol hour or minimum patrol. The other thing I think is important is development, what has developed in the Town of Eastlime over the past couple of years? Two thousand seventeen to nineteen, forty-nine new single-family homes were built, hundred eighty-five units of housing currently under construction, a hundred and eleven lots approved, and more importantly, nine hundred housing units are being proposed, Costco, other businesses that come into town. The reason I point this out, as we go back to that first conversation, our minimum patrol and staffing has been woefully inadequate and has not kept up with the needs that we have for calls for service. So in this year's budget, we're asking for two additional officers, and that's with the support and backing of the Police Commission after multiple conversations. Just to point out to you, with twenty-four officers, the Town of Eastlime is at one point two six officers per thousand population, data from the FBI for two thousand and fifteen, the Connecticut average is two point two per thousand, and if you look at the chart on the next page, it shows how we compare, and I know the IT budget we compared of other communities, but I think it's important from a police standpoint, because what we have to really establish and look at is, how do we decide what is enough for policing? Do we do it through history, do we do it through needs assessment, or do we do it through statistical analysis? I think all of those have to factor in there, but we certainly understand, we look at some of the communities that we are bordering or similar to, we don't really have the finance we don't really have the financial ability to meet where they are. But all of this factors into the type of policing that you get. The more officers you have, the more proactivity, the more directed policing you can, you can perform. When you have less staffing, we are left to be very reactive to problems that happen. That's not necessarily what we always wanna be, so it's always a balance that we're trying to maintain. Again, giving this town the best service, however, doing it for the most efficient funding. So again, our proposal for two officers. I'm looking, if we were giving those two officers, to have one directed as a traffic officer, to meet that great demand that we have from the public on a daily basis, people asking for speed enforcement. So for 40 hours a week, I can direct one officer to say, that is your only function. You don't respond to calls, you don't write reports, other than what's generated by you, and you can go hours and hours and hours to different locations in our town to address the needs of the citizens, because that is really what they're asking for on a day-to-day basis. The second officer would be to bolster that patrol. Talking about minimum patrol, if we put a extra officer on midnight shift, oh, excuse me, evening shift, for five of the seven days a week, we are effectively putting that up one for the staffing. It allows us to have an extra officer out there, doing that proactive patrol, being visible, and allowing us to better, better serve our communities. So, in our budget, if you wanna get to that, much of the rest of the budget did not really have a significant increase. We're looking to maintain the same services, other than adding those two officers that we had, looking at overtime and pay going up by the contractual rate. Understanding the reason that I'm requesting that for overtime is, overtime should be based on hours worked, not a figure. That figure has increased by the raise that the officers receive contractually. So in theory, if it worked this year for an amount of hours, it will work next year at that increase. If it cut, if we maintain the same, we'll be having less hours of overtime available to us. Overtime, how is it paid, or why is it paid? Most of that goes to minimum patrol. So to maintain that minimum, if an officer is at training, or an officer is sick, or on vacation, or has to go to court, that's being paid to replace that officer on patrol. Other overtime is being paid for investigations. So when I hearken back to the fatal accidents, the homicide, the carjacking, all of that required investigative resources that went beyond those detectives or officers 40 hours a week. So that's the overtime that's paid there. You, you'll find that when you do analysis of it, the vast majority of our overtime is for the replacement of a minimum patrol. One big increase is for part-time. Now, that is to meet our contractual obligation. Unfortunately, for some reason, several years ago, it was significantly decreased. I'm looking to increase that to where we have to be to meet that contractual obligation of hours for the one part-time officer. It, it's a need that we've demonstrated this year. We've had to transfer from other areas of the budget, which really couldn't afford to have transfers from it, but we have to do that to meet the contractual obligation.
We have one part-time officer.
One part-time officer, correct.
And that part-time officer chose not to take shifts first. A lot of shifts are his contractual right to pick up shifts for several years in the middle. But now he's in a stage in life where he wants to come in, and he, we are obligated to provide him shifts. So therefore, the chief needs to provide room for him on the schedule.
I, I also think too, that when we had two, I thought we were, Roseanne remembers this better than all of us. We know that. But I thought we did that because we had two part-time officers, and our Bobby Cotillo retired, so he said, well, so now we're down, that was supposed to be divided between the two of them. I thought that's why we did it, but I could be wrong.
No, I, I know that three or four years ago, I just dropped it down 'cause we weren't using the money. We were contractually putting that money in.
And when I first came in, the, the one part-time officer had, was out with an injury for extended period of time, so we didn't recognize my first year that we were gonna have this obligation that wasn't being paid because we weren't actually paying it for that reason.
Okay. Sorry.
Everything else in our budget, again, maintaining pretty much the same. The only other increase to note is for uniforms, with a request for two officers, looking for $6,000 increase, and that is to out for the new officers. As we bring somebody on who is not a current officer, we obviously have a need to, to give them the full outfit and full complement of uniforms and equipment, which becomes costly. And we are also in a situation where we have some retirements coming up and some replacements. We're gonna recognize that anyway in our budget, so we're trying to, to balance that as is.
Before I ask for questions, and for the chief to wrap up, and Sergeant Masek's here as well, I'd like to introduce the members of the Police Commission who are here to support the chief and all the activity. Dan, Dan Price, why don't you come up? You're, you're the chair, and you have been since its inception, of the Police Commission, which is obviously an independent commission that, that watches over the police department and, and is approved this budget, including the increases of the officers. Dan?
Our job as a Police Commission is to make sure that our Eastline Police Department is as effective as possible. The chief does an incredible job doing more with less, like every other department head in this town. But we are at the point where we need to add officers. We're no longer at a point where, you know, it'd be nice to have a couple extra guys on the road. This is a point where, without more officers, they cannot do their job effectively. These two officers is a very good first step, that the Police Commission wholeheartedly is behind this and, and truly feels that this is an absolute necessity to continue to effectively police our town. I just wanted to state that for the Commission itself.
That's, well, well, a point well made. Your Police Commissioners that are here tonight?
We are. We have, I'm sorry, my brain just died.
That'd be Mark.
Mark Powers. And, and Joe?
Perkins?
Perkins, thank you. Oh, my God. It's been a long day, sorry.
And you're Dan Price?
I'm Dan Price, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I put you on the spot. I get it.
But no, you know, the Commission is very, very concerned, and, and, you know, the chief does an incredible job. I mean, he really does an incredible job. He has done, taken this town police force so far in two years, three years? So, you know, we, we support him, and he is absolutely right on this budget is as tight as we can get it.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. Thank you for the support and for serving our town, all, all of you, and the members that couldn't make it out tonight. We appreciate the service. Are there questions for the, on the police budget?
Do you wanna go first?
No, I won't either.
I think they're fighting it over here. I'm not bothering this one.
So we recently brought on a 24th officer.
Yes.
I met her the other day. Very happy to meet her. So that bring, and that person, she has gone through the academy?
Yes, so she, so she was actually a sergeant in the old Sevres Police Department, who did a lateral transfer to our agency, so we're very...
So she doesn't have, so she's...
Nope. She's a 10-year veteran, so she's all, all set to go once she can, finishes our in-house training to get acclimated to the town of Eastline and how we do business.
Now, if the two additional officers were to be approved, do we have enough vehicles?
Yes, there will be no impact on vehicles, understanding the vehicles are a rotation. So we generally will put one to two officers assigned to a vehicle. As we are improving our fleet, and by improving, I mean getting rid of older vehicles and having newer vehicles, the capacity for longer use is certainly there.
But I like those old vehicles. We should bring back the Crown Vic.
We, we effectively, within the next couple of weeks, have gotten rid of all of our Crown Vics, except for the spare vehicle. But I, I think that's an important note to make. We are certainly capable, within the fleet that we have, of maintaining the force that we are asking for, with, with no vehicle increases.
So if the two new officers that were to be hired have, are not experienced officers, we would, there would be an additional expense to send them to the academy?
Yes. So we, we preliminarily have a June academy seat, should we need that. We have some retirements coming up, so it's, it's kind of a shell game right now of when we would send somebody and who. It costs about $4,000 to send to the academy, but certainly, inside of our training line, we have the ability to, to absorb that through training. And, and that is accounted for in my line with what's budgeted there.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I wasn't aware that it would come from that line.
Yes, it would.
I think that that was, those are my only two questions, I think, so I'll pass.
Okay, I'm gonna go this way, Mr. Dago?
With the increase, with the two officers, would there be no offsetting decrease in overtime?
No, because the, the goal of that is not to reduce overtime, especially putting it on traffic.
I know it wasn't the goal, I just know there would be any.
There, you know, it's, in theory, putting somebody on the evening shift certainly could have an impact, and we could, at the end of the day, recognize that we have had a reduction. However, as anomalies happen, injuries happen, I, I would never wanna stand here and say, it's going to cut overtime. Because that, the, the goal is better services, but certainly trying to be efficient.
You mentioned mutual aid that we get from other towns for the town events. Do we provide mutual aid from other towns?
We do, yes.
Very good. And two of the events that are listed here are Celebrate Eastline, which is a town function. Is there any of the, any of that money that's raised from vendors brought back to the town?
So, so, so we, we reimburse $5,000. That, that started this past year. The Parks and Rec Department put an increase in their vendor fee, which then goes back to our foot patrol parade line item, because we recognize that that was being completely borne on the town, and it's a large expense for the police officers working that entire day.
Same thing for Hartford Marathon?
Those are all private events, so they are 100% paid by that vendor. Now, the Hartford Marathon, just to point out for the mutual aid, when they come for the light parade, so let's say Stonington sends an officer for light parade, Stonington pays that officer. The Hartford Marathon is different. The Hartford Marathon, they pay those officers regardless of what town they're coming from. So, you know, they're, they're fully reimbursed for that.
Let's go back to Celebrate Eastline for a second, 'cause I wanna talk about that. We started with $5,000. Booth rentals are like 50 bucks. And some of these food vendors coming from big, you know, from, not locals, are making thousands of dollars that day, and I, my, my intention is to continue to increase the, the rents on the out-of-town, non-resident booths and increase the security price or the reimbursement back. When you think about the, how, how many years have we been doing Celebrate Eastline? Wayne started that back in, is it 25 years ago?
2001?
Yeah, so, it could be 20 years. Think about what the security needs were in 2000.
Yeah, just blocking off roads.
And so, then you go through 2011, 2001, and 9/11 and all that. Then you go through what happened up at the Boston Marathon, and you just think about responsibility and risk that we need to provide, and, you know, we have a chief and, and his force that is doing an excellent job, and we're grateful for the regional services. But we need to increase our fees to support that as well. And yes, there's, there's built-in costs here to, to support that, that event.
And my last question is, you're eliminating the mobile radio service contract for $19,000.
That moves into IT. So that was one of the ones that, that Joe talked about before. That's for our in-car computers and, and supported through IT.
Right. That's all I had. Thank you.
You'll see that on the other page too. You'll see scheduling software disappeared. Our DMS software disappeared, and one went down. Computer maintenance line 214 went down by $10,000. We're gonna leave $5,000 in that budget.
Yeah, I saw that. I missed it, this section of 214.
Yeah.
So it, it goes over to IT.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just, how does a grant overtime reimbursement work? I don't understand that.
So basically, that, that, such as a DUI grant is one example of that. The drug enforcement grant was another. So that's money that we are anticipating, or had anticipated, getting from the state of Connecticut, should grants become available. We needed to have a corresponding revenue and expenditure line for the auditing purposes. So that's just an estimate of what we may get. We may not get that money, so that's really what that is.
It's a placeholder for...
It is, yes, really for audit purposes.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I, Chief, I think it'd also be good, 'cause the question comes up, obviously, this year's a lot of highway overtime for the officers. It'd probably be good to explain that that does not cost the town anything for the car or the officer and so forth.
So, so what, what is billed to the vendors for any road construction? Far exceeds, not far exceeds, but, but pays for everything that this town will have expense for. It pays for all of the benefits of the officer, including pension, workers' comp, but also gives us $25 per hour for vehicles. That money now has correspondingly in the past, this is the second year in this budget, where we will be able to pay the vehicle acquisition fee for the new police cars. So now we are reducing the impact on the taxpayers and their liability because they no longer have to pay for that currently as it stands. So we are, you know, with the large construction projects that took place with Costco and some of the other ones, that has certainly, you know, had excellent dividends to that account, so to speak. So we're able to assist with finance and pay those.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Bridge construction, we had, we have a bridge that's gonna start construction any day now, right?
You know, and all of these, to be honest with you, some of the ones, those add up, but some of the ones you don't see add up. The Daily Eversource, or certain cable companies, or other vendors that are out there, that certainly adds up to your town. But we also recognize there's a wear and tear on the vehicles, so we wanna make sure that that's being recognized, compensated, and we're able to replace those vehicles in a quicker manner because of that.
And with the addition of two officers, the wear and tear on the officers, would the increased amount of overtime will help as well?
Certainly.
Correct.
Also, and, and it, it's, obviously, it's hard for me to be totally objective in this 'cause, you know, I spent 28 and a half years as a state trooper and before that, a town officer here in Eastline for a brief period. And there is, you know, we always talk about the minimum patrol, and, okay, it's a midnight shift in February. We don't need three people. Tell me what night that you know for sure you're not gonna get those calls, they're gonna do it. Even with three people working, which is our minimum now, if you have a domestic dispute, that ties up two people for quite a period of time. Now, if you have a motor vehicle accident and an alarm come in, one of those, you have to decide which one has to wait, and things like that. And same thing with alarms. You try to send two people, 'cause the vast, vast majority of alarms are false alarms, until you send that one officer there by himself and it isn't. So when you look at the staffing and surrounding towns and so forth like that, and the volumes of calls that are going up in town, and we see it all the time for, for more domestic, drug-related activity and stuff like that, I think we've more than made the case, it's a miserable year for financing and budgeting. It always is. It's always, next year will be a little better, and it always turns out next year's a little worse. So I think what people do, and the same thing with the fire department. Now we have, and I'm sure one of them will point out when they come up, that over the last couple of weeks, because we had that paid firefight run overnight, a house fire turned out to not be very bad because there was someone to get the truck there immediately to remedy the situation. More and more calls for emergency help or for people, for help. When people call for it, they have a right to expect it too, so, anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions?
Just a couple. So I concur, and also, and in talking to town residents and stuff, the number one concern I, I hear too is about speeding and traffic enforcement, so I think that needs to be addressed. And I think that is, I think you're reading, reading the two leaves right. That's what, you hear it all the time too. The only question I have is, we're bringing a K-9 on. I noticed you have K-9 of 3500. Do you have the funds, you, 'cause you have training going on, right, with the K-9?
So, well, not yet. We're waiting for some staffing issues. I wanna see what some retirements lay. Before, before the end of this fiscal year, we will venture into getting the next K-9, which was, which is already approved. That, that line right there is for the upkeep. That has been traditionally what has been budgeted in our budget for the maintenance of two K-9s. That pays for the veterinary bills, that pays for the food for two dogs. So that, that maintains the same.
What about one-time costs as we bring this, new K-9?
So the only one-time cost, the approval has already been there for the expenditure, including coming of asset forfeiture to pay for the K-9 itself. The training is not costing us, it's just the officer's time, which then would be a training line issue. So it certainly is not gonna be impacted inside of the K-9.
Okay.
I have a couple of follow-ups.
For sure.
The DUI grant, is that definite that that is suspended?
So, so for this past year, we have not gotten it. We will certainly reapply when that comes up again. That comes up halfway through the year, so it's impossible to say, within this fiscal year, we would not get that again. It's really a timing issue. But as the first selectman can say from a COG standpoint, multiple rural towns, or towns that are not urban, were denied the grant this past year, so it's nothing specific to Eastline. It seems like it was a state decision.
So did they reduce the amount of funding available?
I don't know. All we, all we were told was that we were denied the grant.
I'd like to have us pursue that further. There were a lot from the Board of Selectmen, through the first selectman.
Yeah, I spoke to Kathy Austin, who is, you know, a powerful state senator in our area and also Chair of Appropriations, and I think she's a majority deputy. You might know, Mark. You work up there. You, you too, you're a former senator. So, so, but, but she's aware of our, in her town, in several other towns. I, I would say towns like ours, throughout the state are not receiving this. And I think the money was shifted to bigger cities.
I'd still like to have a letter go from the Board. What is the policy on our town police going onto I-95?
As far as...
Any response to accidents, major accidents or anything?
You know, the, the only, I mean, there really is no specific policy to that. Officers, if they're requested by the state police, which does happen frequently 'cause they have known the area, they will request an officer to, to head up there to, to assist them. Sometimes if the officer is adjacent to one of the... Sometimes if the officer is adjacent to one of the on-ramps and they hear it, as the fire department is being sent there, we'll swing up there, especially if it's a life safety issue. So, I would say we do respond, we don't respond on a regular basis unless requested, or, again, the officer's in a position where it sounds serious, where they may be able to render aid immediately.
And finally, on the Marine Patrol, is the amount of money budgeted enough to cover for all summer weekends?
Yes, it is, yeah. It is, and, and that is really for the regional boat as well as our boat, and what we try to do, and Sergeant Masek is largely responsible for this, scheduling that boat sporadically to offset and also complement that regional patrol. Because we have to understand, being a Waterford asset, it also could be up the Thames River on the Waterford waterfront, and we still may need or should have somebody in the summer out in our specific waters, because, you know, we, we hear it all the time, the complaints about speeding, unsafe boating. We want to make sure that we have a presence on the waterways, but also we have a requirement to investigate accidents, so to speak. If there's an accident that takes place with a boat, with a kayaker or jet skier, we're responsible. The Coast Guard doesn't investigate that. Very infrequently, we would be able to get deep out there to do that. So, you know, we're responsible for, for deploying assets to do that, that's why the boats are very important.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up, do, we don't get reimbursement from the state when we're being requested out on the highway?
No.
And Chief, one last question, and both of us, and Mark just brought this up. Do we get calls to Rocky Neck during the summer for disturbances?
We do.
Which is obviously supposed to be covered by deep in the state.
So, inside, inside of my monthly report to the Police Commission, I chronicle that, the number of times that we're going. And it really comes down to several hundred times that we're getting called to Rocky Neck during the summer.
Several hundred?
For a, a wide variety, and that may be not just us, but also the fire department and EMS. So, it, it is frequent. It is something that I will tell you that every police department that has a large state park in their community, Madison, so to speak, with Hammond Asset and some other ones, certainly share that experience. And, and the deep officers are spread out so thin across the state that it really is a safety issue many times. We can get there, mitigate a situation long before they're able to respond to that.
Yet they get the fee. And it's supposed to provide basic essentials, you know, bathrooms and parking and security, and they don't provide security.
And similar to where it's going to be a nice hot summer weekend, and we know what Rocky Neck connector looks like, and we know who's doing all the traffic control out there.
And you do the traffic controls. So, you have to put extra officers on? Want another letter?
Yes, I do.
Because I've already, because I've already written that one.
Dust it off.
Right here.
We'll all sign it.
It's not right.
No.
Thank you, any other questions?
And I'll move on to animal control, so last page in the packet you have in front of you, just a, a real basic overview. Animal control, as you're aware, we share with the Town of Waterford. We have a full-time ACO and one assistant ACO. The assistant ACO came on several months ago, and that has been working out very, very well. We are sharing the regional facility in the city of New London. Town of Waterford, if you recall this past year, their, their facility became really unusable because of the conditions of the building, so they moved operations over to the city of New London. The partnership agreement that we have with the Town of Waterford is they're responsible for facilities, we are responsible for the personnel and the vehicle. That was long established prior to my arrival. And right now, just so you have awareness, our ACO responded to two-hundred-and-thirty animal incidents in the Town of East Lime. However, we also can't just look at a statistical piece with that. There's so much that that officer is responsible to do, and we are responsible for having somebody to, to respond to those incidents. So, it is a necessity. You'll look at the budget, the budget is very bare bones and minimal. There's, there's no increases other than the contractual increases for the raises for the officers. Other than that, everything maintains really the status quo. I believe that operation is working very well and continues to work well.
Sure does. This is the total cost, and then we get fifty percent back?
Yes.
So, that, you know, he makes fifty-three-eight, and then we get a check, a check back from Waterford, so really the.
So, that budget to us is.
Budget gets cut in half. Great.
One question?
Uh, what's the status of the building, the addition that was being put out on the New London animal control?
I, I do not know. That's a great question, I'm, I'm not aware.
I don't know, it's been disbanded.
I expect the.
No, no, the, the, the new one.
The new one in the building.
That we put an addition on, right, so that we could house all our.
Unfortunately, because that, since Waterford's been responsible for, for the building part, they don't, not that they don't share, but we're not really involved with that whole conversation, we certainly can ask and try to find an answer for you.
I'll find out before.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Maybe we can get a tour when it's done.
I don't think it's built yet.
It's just not built yet.
I do know I have regular conversations with Art, with the ACO about how the operations are working over there, and there are no issues regarding how things are operating.
Is everyone over in the new building, it's just, they don't have the addition yet?
They're over in the current facility, which has always been there.
The same one.
For a long time, it's the New London facility. We're going to put a wing on it and add beds or rooms or cages. Yeah, it's not beds, is it? Well, dogs get beds. We're going to add room, and I don't think that, I don't think that additional piece is in. But currently, they're, they're, what they have is, is great standards and enough room technically, but statutorily, we have to have the extra room.
Okay, so we're out of the old one.
But I'll get that, I'll get that answer. I don't know where they are. They went through the planning, they had to go through zoning and all that stuff, they went through architecture, and, and I thought they went out to bid. I just don't think they broke ground on it yet. But I might be wrong, I might be already up. Like Chief says, we're just out of that loop, thankfully.
Is that over Bates Woods, is that where that was?
That's at Bates Woods, that's right down Clark Lane, and it's right there. Very convenient for people to go over there and pick up their dogs and all that stuff. You know, it costs us zero as well, keep in mind. We use the donations that had come in many years ago, and then Waterford picked up the difference. Any other questions for Chief and the Sergeant on the ACO or any of the budgets? They did a remarkable job. Great presentation tonight, appreciate all the extra time you put into the, the handout. I think it went a long way of letting us understand, I mean, because a year goes by and you forget how many officers and what our history is. I did a great job, and I thank the Police Commission for all the work that they do. I know you work hard at this, and we've, we've come a long way in just two and a half short years. And while we have a long way to go, we're getting there, and we're making progress. Might not be perfection, but progress is important. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Nixon, I think, considering the number of new projects that have come online, both housing projects and business, we certainly should see an increase in tax revenue. And I would like to suggest that some of that tax, extra tax revenue, I'd like to suggest to the Board of Finance that that be, that some of that be dedicated to the hiring of police officer, one police officer, if not both.
Indeed, indeed. And we'll certainly make that point when we have that opportunity collectively in front of the Board of Finance, and hopefully they'll understand with, this presentation, I'm sure, will be duplicated to them, if not enhanced. And I think that makes a good point. Though, is that without, with that extra income, we have to support that. Great. Would you all like to take a five-minute recess? And we've been here for a couple of hours, and, and then we'll go right into the fire budgets. And they shouldn't take too long at all. Five minutes.
In there, which the town gets reimbursed for by East Lime Ambulance Fund for the, for the nighttime fifty-cent differential. It also didn't have to budget for last year as well. So, those, those are those increases that you'll see between last year's numbers and this year's numbers as, on line six-eleven.
So, you can't compare that actual expense back in two thousand nineteen, because, again, we've now put on another firefighter.
And the nighttime firefighter, ten PM to seven AM, is also configured into that. However, like I was saying earlier, that's also reimbursed by East Lime Ambulance Fund.
That's a good, good point. Your part-time firefighters go up, and we, we've had conversations about this.
So, so it's going up twofold. It's a nineteen percent increase on paper, which is like, oh, my God, but in reality, it's the real number. Last year, when I presented a budget to the Board of Finance, it was a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, and I had to come back and I had to ask for, I think, almost twelve thousand dollars more. And so, working with Anna Johnson, we was able to do so, and those were real, real numbers. This year, going ahead, I made it the actual number of where I left off with last year. So, that being said, it's about, it was about a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. You're going to see an increase of about twelve thousand five hundred dollars on top of that, because we don't have true twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five paid coverage in this town. And at this point, in the volunteer service that we all recognize is, is fading, unfortunately. It is my responsibility and our responsibility to make sure that we're providing adequate protection twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five against somebody on the road. And because of budget constraints, this is just a small step into a direction that I believe we're going to be heading into, into having more full-time paid personnel on as we lead it. But for now, what I've done here is presenting to you and the Board of Finance, hopefully with your blessing, is I'm going to cover eighteen hours a week, a Friday night and a Saturday night shift. That's currently just, that has strictly volunteer hours that's covered. So, I'm proposing that I'll fill that spot with paid staff, so that where there, somebody gets that rig out, somebody gets that ambulance on the road, the volunteers meet that rig, and if it is anything, then we call for more help. We get the help that we need, and, and we'll have that, the staffing and the response times that we need. Obviously, getting, the other night on Ostregachi Hills Road, Mr. Siri said something earlier. Firefighter Halen was, was our overnight guy, and he was the first one on scene, and he held a dryer fire to, to the, to a dryer. And if it wasn't for his actions, it could have been much worse. And unfortunately, the turnout I had for that event wasn't as good as, as I would have liked. I had a very low turnout for a fire, and that scared me a little bit. So, this just kind of enhances that even further, that I need more help. And that's a difficult thing to, that's a difficult thing to say, that I need, you know, we need more help. We put banners in town, it's been on the, on the lawns, it's been out at Rocky Neck, it's been at West Main Street Firehouse. Chief Rex has had his firehouse. It's just, it's tough.
So, let me just highlight verbally what's going on here. We've talked about, we need volunteers, we need volunteers, we put banners, we've done recruiting, we've had open houses, we've done all the things that we need to do, but volunteers in, in the United States of America are disappearing, or they're, we have lower numbers than we used to have. We still have people coming in, but not at the same volume. And whatever I say here, I want to start by saying we value our volunteers, and volunteers do still show up.
Yeah.
And they do support us, but we need to, we're now paying for hours, eighteen hours a week, that we used to have volunteers show up for and be around for.
We still do, we still do, Mr. Nickerson. It's just I, I don't have the number that I need to effectively mitigate that incident. So, what I'm doing is, is that I'm adding that paid staff to enhance that, to get that truck on the road, to get the somebody there to start mitigating the incident until I have a sufficient enough staff to get there to, 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 to mitigate it.
So, so we are, and, and this has happened, we've already enhanced part-timers in the past, we're enhancing it here. And in the future, I mean, the direction we're heading, the trajectory we're going in is more and more paid people, whether it's full-timers or paid part-timers, because the state of volunteerism in the fire services is depreciating. And we just, that's the reality of it. So, this is a mismanagement, this isn't spending when we shouldn't be, this is ineffective department leadership. This is, we had volunteers, we don't have the same number of volunteers. We need to pay for that service, because we have, a, a very basic town service is to provide fire protection, police protection, and many other things as well. But we have an obligation, a moral obligation, that when the bell rings, to get people there. And, and our chiefs are confident that's always going to happen, unless we have some paid people here to enhance the volunteerism. So, thank you, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that, that's a very, very important part of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So, with, so moving on from the part-time budget, I go to the six-one-four, which is overtime. Increase just because of the contractual obligation for the, the hourly wage. Longevity pay remained the same. Moving down, we started in the services, OSHA remained the same from last year's budget, it was fourteen thousand. Vehicle maintenance is the same. Radio maintenance is the same. Building maintenance increased to eight thousand from six thousand, and that increases because I am running two of the oldest buildings in town that we are operating out of. Sixth Grand Street is the Morris Building, is the very first fire department of the Town of, or of Nyanac. You know, it had a wagon and a, and a, it had a wagon in there, and the guys were hand cranking that pumper when, when we opened that thing up. So, that, we're still operating out of now, which houses our boat. So, we respond to marine emergencies in the sound, and we help the kayaker, the boater in distress. We assist the PD, or the PD assists us rather, so when those calls come in. So, the pickup truck, which is a first response vehicle, if one of our ambulances is out, that, that piece of equipment will go out to, to render aid until Flanders, Flanders end of town, their ambulance will come down.
So, let's talk about the building maintenance, let's stay on that. Only eight thousand dollars to.
Yeah, that's, that's it. So, so the older side of the building is, is what I'm getting at, is that it houses the equipment that we need, but the buildings are deteriorating, and costs are going up.
I'll remind the, the Board of Selectmen that you have three buildings, not two.
That's correct, and then we still have this West Main Street building, so I have Eight Grand Street, Sixth Grand Street, and, and two thirty-seven West Main Street.
So, eight thousand is a reasonable amount. Obviously, the untold story is the Ambulance Association helps this town in so many different ways, and this is another one of the ways that.
The Ambulance Fund, yeah, it helps out tremendously.
When we really need an enhancement to a building.
And we, and we help, and, and we work with Ron Bentz, Ron Bentz is helpful as well, Joe Brugoff.
The only other, the only other issue you need to highlight then this evening is the uniform, which is kind of a natural increase, because, well, actually, it's a, it's a contractual increase that we had with the new contract with firefighters.
Yeah, so, the uniform increase, as you can see there, is just for contractual reasons, like Mr. Nickerson just said.
They hadn't had an increase for a while, for the cost of uniforms and boots and all the equipment that they wear in uniforms. So, that was the, the obligation there. So, other than that, everything else is.
Uh, yeah, the fuels, fuels, we got permission from the ambulance to, we accepted the fuel under Mr. Nixon, wrote us East Lime Ambulance a letter, and so that would be a zero. So, East Lime Ambulance has, so that they will fund the fuels for the firehouses and the, and the equipment.
Any questions from the Board of Selectmen? Anybody?
Just a clarification, so we brought firefighter on overnight this year with the ambulance funds. That covers us five nights, right? That covers, yeah, so from Sunday at ten PM to Thursday, Friday morning at seven AM. Okay, so you're asking for an increase so we could pick up those extra nights? So, the extra hours would be from eleven PM to eight AM, Friday night into Saturday morning, and then Saturday night into Sunday morning. Does that give us complete coverage? That is twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five. Okay, so that, that's, that's a big increase here. In, at the Grand Street Station only for the Nyanac Fire District. Okay, and you have, you have part-timers that can fill this role? We have part-timers, and we have full-timers, if a part-timer can't fill that. If my budget allows for that full-timer to, or for that spot to be filled by a full-timer, then yes, it will be filled. Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions? Straightforward budget, and that's, that's, hasn't been always the case, Chief, so we really appreciate the work you put into it, and, and helping us understand your operation.
Yes, I just want to reiterate real quick, with Chief Anklestein said earlier, with the amount of developments and the anticipation of more developments and the increase in town population, our call for services are going to increase. And I just want to go real quick, we responded to twenty-one-hundred-and-seventy-plus emergency calls last year alone. And that number just increases and continues to increase, and the calls for service continue to increase, and our demand continues to increase, obviously. So, it's not so, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword. We're losing volunteers, and our, and our calls for service are increasing, and you can only depend on, you know, volunteers for so much, because they're, they're, they're that. They're leaving their families, they're doing whatever in the middle of the day or at night, or in the middle of the night, to come and assist somebody, and you can only ask somebody to do somebody times if you're going out twelve or fifteen times a day. So, so I just wanted to reiterate that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I do have a question for Anna. The, there's a revenue number down there of 7, 79,848 from ambulance reimbursement?
Yeah.
And then there's a net budget number that doesn't, so if we're taking the 693, 848, which I think is our number, and we subtract that, it turns out, that comes out to less money, that comes out to 613,999. Was that number maybe not updated with the adopted, or?
Good catch.
613, what?
It should be 613,999.
That was the fuel change, Anna. We took, we took the 15,000 out, and that's probably your difference.
I'll take a look at the...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
That, that still doesn't get it quite there, maybe something else, it's not...
And there was some, there was some changes in the wages and...
I think we may see the same thing under Flanders.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for the catch.
Yep.
Nice to have it all tidied up. I'll reiterate my sentiments to Chief Bill Ricks, Flanders Fire Department. Watch the cord, don't care about the trip over. This is handy, John, at the next level. If you could put maybe...
I thought you had mine, I have mine, I can give you mine.
Oh. Good evening. Was it, give it to you guys? We had one that we went over when you did your budget.
Well, I thought you had.
I don't think they got it. Do you have enough to pass out?
Yeah, four, five.
Perfect. You wanna make sure you have the six or seven for finance, okay?
I can look at them with the rotate.
Yeah.
Alright, so real quick, just wanna hand it out to the annual budget for the Flanders Fire Department, from July 18th to June 30th of the 19th. Flanders Fire Department responded to 1,278 calls, I did a breakdown of what incidents were what, how many were service calls, how many were trainings, how many miles we put on each vehicle, and then a list of how many times the equipment that we used, and how many times we used it. The second page is the biggest thing I wanna focus on before I get into the budget, like we've been talking about earlier, the volunteers are, they're drying up, they're nonexistent, and just trying to keep what we have is, is hard enough. So in one month, we have 107 calls, I have 210 volunteer responses, but it's an average of two volunteers a call, certified, trained to do something volunteers. So the volunteers I have are great, they know what they're doing, they're trained to the highest level to be counted as certified, and to the same people all the time. And I can tell you right now that my most active people are over the age of 50, and they're on the downhill side of their volunteer careers. You know, they've served this town for over 20 years, and it's taken a toll on them, so, and there's nobody new coming in behind them, so staffing is a huge problem for us, and like Chief Dwyer said, it's hard to say we need help, but we do. You'll see when I get to my part-time budget, it goes up for the non-affiliated raise that they're scheduled to get, and to cover some extra Friday, Saturday night hours to give us as well as Nyanac 24/7 coverage, so it'd be irresponsible not to have paid staff around the clock at this point because it's become that much of a problem in the town. So with that said, I'll start right off at the top. My 611 account is for the full-time firefighters, that's 251,000, that's a 3.62, 62% increase, that's from the contractual obligations. My part-time firefighters went up 7.15%, like I said, that's the unaffi, the expected unaffiliated raise that's set by your board, and the few extra hours to do the 24/7 coverage. My overtime account...
Again, we're adding hours into Flanders to cover what was, was covered by volunteers, 100%.
My overtime account went up about 4.64%, that's just taken to effect of contractual raises that they're getting, and to a couple unexpected hours that they might work, you know, East Lime Day, the Light Parade, stuff like that. My longevity went down, I had a full-time firefighter retire that had 37 years, so we're not paying out the over $1,000 longevity that he received. My OSHA account stays at 0% of 14,000, my vehicle maintenance is at 19,000 at 0%. You'll notice the 250% increase in my radio maintenance, it's always been $2,000, and we on a regular CIP is $5,000 to cover our radio repairs, maintenance and whatnot. First Selectmen and Anna decided that should be in my regular radio maintenance instead of in the capital, so that's why that's $7,000, so you won't see it in the CIP this year because it's just now moved into my regular budget. Building maintenance is still at $3,000, small equipment is still at 2,000, our training is staying at 5,000. My telephones is 2,600, the town takes care of the phones for us. The fuels I had put in for 8,000, that has been agreed upon by the ambulance to be paid for. My uniforms went up to 5,400, like Mr. Nickerson said earlier, the full-timers got a raise in their uniform contract, so that reflects that. And my miscellaneous is still at 1,500 with a 0% increase. Now, the net, well, the revenue from the ambulance, we have 79,848, that's the minimum amount that you'll get back from the ambulance. If that firefighter works any overtime, that money's being paid by the ambulance back to the town, so that's the minimum amount you'll receive as reimbursement.
Okay. Any questions? Again, the straightforward budget, and it mimics what we're doing on the south side of town.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. We, on either one of these department breakdowns, I don't, I see under Flanders, the fire alarm activations, I don't see any listing of false alarms.
That's, it's just a general, I didn't break it down that much, for even me to even do this report, I have to sit there and go page by page to do this. There is no computer program that breaks it down solely for us, so...
Would you be able to give us an approximation of...
I couldn't honestly give you a real answer.
False alarms? Okay. The reason I'm asking is that we passed an ordinance some time ago that people were supposed to be paying fines for false alarms, and I don't see...
A few years back, I believe that ordinance was suspended.
That's why I was asking about...
How long ago? We didn't do it, I didn't do it.
You didn't do it.
No, I think it was, I think it was under Paul, that we passed that because it was a high frequency.
I still have the forms on my desk to hand out to people, you get, you get one freebie, and then after that, you get charged every time we come back.
Well, I think that we should reinstate that.
We have talked about it, I have your proposals right in my file, and we have something to push forward, we can talk about it during the off-season.
Well, I think with the, with the number of new businesses coming in, and larger developments, I think we should reinstate that policy, I didn't, I don't, I don't recall having suspended it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill actually did a lot of work on it, so pulled that out, dusted it off, tweak it if it needs to, and we'll bring it forward. Any other questions about the budget? Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer hours, your dedication, and you know, can we talk about your daytime? Nah. He works as a full-timer as well. And then, on his off-time, he comes here, volunteers. So I guess the new guy on the block has to wait the longest. You know, someday, if you spend your career here, John, Mr. Way, you might be able to go first. But last one on the door, you get to wait till the end. The good news is, it was only a couple hours.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And you find out everybody else's business, so...
Yes.
Yeah, what I have is just some personal background on the account that's actually going up to the most...
Right. And Port Chief had to stay for the whole darn thing too, because we have some issues with the public safety fire marshal budget, because it's all intertwined from the old, from the old budget that also had dispatchers in it, if you remember, just go back a couple years, Dick Morse had the fire marshal, the public safety, and EM.
And before John gets into the budget, it probably is a good time to have the conversation that we really are going to, you know, be having the conversation or seeking the need to separate the budgets between fire marshal, emergency management. There has, institutionally, has been a lot of spillover, we noticed that when we had to take dispatch out of the budget, because it was three things in one. We kind of painfully did that, noticed there were some things that were overlapping, but as we've worked through this, you know, John and myself, in this new budget with Anna and the First Selectmen, there are things that I think for increased transparency, we really should be looking at having a fire marshal's budget and emergency management budget separate. So we have a clear understanding of whose budget is which, and the taxpayers and yourselves have a clear understanding of what you're paying for which services, so, and I think that however we can get that done, that's something we need to explore doing.
Good evening, appreciate your time this evening, appreciate working for the town of East Lime. Mr. Nickerson, I know it's, if we're gonna start with, the handle basically speaks to the deputy account, so...
If you wanna give us a brief, yeah, if you wanna give us a brief overview of what you've written out to us, and we'll be able to read this on our own in detail, but tell us the state of your department, you showed up about a month, a couple months ago, at the very most.
Yep, started in, beginning of January.
Okay.
And early, I've been welcomed by everybody here, had several events already that have happened within the town, we had an event with the Nyanac Motel, and these three or four fire incidents, and I can't thank enough the support from the fire department. As Mr. Siri said earlier, the incident, not only at 71 Oswegachi's Hill Road, but we had an elderly woman, and the timing of the overnight firefighter, being there in a timely manner, being able to get there quickly, made sure the occupant was out of the house, which is most important, and extinguished the fire, which prevented any damage to the structure. The fire was contained just to the dryer unit. Also, earlier, in the month of January, we had a fire in Seven Chadwick, again, overnight firefighter, got there, timely manner, excuse me, insured occupants were out of the house, and that the fire was extinguished before it had any really damage to the structure. So I can't speak enough to that, it makes my job a lot easier, not only as the fire marshal, but also to the residents of the town. I can't stress that, I spent over 20 years as a career firefighter, and I can tell you that you cannot be having somebody in the station in quarters, just for some background.
So you're, you've, maybe not a first impression at this point, but where is your department now, where do you see it going, now that you're, you've had some fresh eyes on the Fire Marshal's office?
Well, I've been, spent some time in the town, being able to get into some of the businesses, conducting inspections, along with the ongoing new construction, Upstate Gateway is probably the one of the major one that everybody's most familiar with, we also have some businesses in town that are being renovated. One of the motel, Nyanac Motel is gonna be, actually is in the process of internal demolition right now, and going through the entire renovation project inside, not only by counterpart with the building, building department, but from my side, entire new building, fire alarm system, and components as well. Just one of the things that, just wanna reinforce from my side of it, looking at things, with our inspection program, you can have ordinance and laws, but the only way to really do it is actually to have code enforcement. I'm taking a strong look at what's been done in the past, and talking with business owners, with the town officials, and how to do things, what's required, what's not, and I'm just finding that with, with what I have for staffing, which is I'm the full-time person, that I have two or three deputies, the information I provided you basically goes to speak to the deputy fire marshals to bring in the help with the inspections. We have regular inspections, which are a little over, like a little over 700, but that doesn't take into account is re-inspections. Very few times do we go through a building and find no violations, it's just the cost of doing business. The busier, I use a restaurant, for instance, the busier they are, the more wear and tear on their equipment, the more maintenance they have to do. Buildings with sprinkler systems, we have to ensure that they have a vendor there at least four times a year to maintain the system, and we're kind of the watchdog to make sure that the sprinkler contractor is doing his due diligence to the system, and if they find deficiencies, that they are being corrected. Also, I look at it as my job to make sure that the customer hiring a vendor to service their sprinkler system is getting the most bang for their buck, or the restaurant owner that hires a company to clean their hood, making sure we, holding them accountable that they're getting what they paid for. With doing so, having more than just me on staff to go out, perform the inspections, the re-inspections, and then, God forbid, there is a fire incident, that kind of unfortunately brings everything to a halt, where I have to focus all my efforts on that. One of the most important things that I've learned with doing this, in this position, not only here, but in going along, is something called business critical interruption. What that is, is envision, we talked about East Lime Days, envision East Lime Days, business right here on Main Street, and we have a fire incident. Obviously, number one, we wanna make sure that everybody's, that they're safe, but what that interruption does, and not only for that particular business, for the people that work there, people who, you know, patronize it, and also for the surrounding businesses that we put Nyanac's ladder truck across Main Street in July, it not only, it brings negative attention to the town, it brings a stop to any tourism, it stops people from coming in, and also it has long-term effects on our economy. And if I can go in and conduct an inspection, prevent a kitchen fire from happening by having them, you know, clean their hood more frequently, or making sure that they didn't use extension cords for a permanent power source, to me, that's a win. With the, my, kind of my office model, kind of we've drawn a line in the sand, is focusing on education and prevention. A lot of people think of the Fire Marshal's Office that, well, fire investigation, although that is a critical component of my job, I feel that through education and prevention, we can be more effective in working with the residents and business owners of the town.
Stopping the fire from even happening.
Exactly, that is my goal, education and prevention is the goal of our office, and that's our mission going forward.
Great. I'll remind the Board of Selectmen that it was just a few years ago when Dick Morse was still employed, and he was for several decades as a fire marshal, that we had an assistant fire marshal in Chris Taylor, and when we moved Chris Taylor up to fire marshal, we eliminated the assistant position. We also still had a line for part-time fire marshals, who would be the crew that would help Chris and Dick go out and do the inspections, or do them. So we eliminated a position, what I'm doing this year is increasing the budget by about $15,000 under the fire marshal's line, the part-time fire marshals. These are the fellows that are part-time, that come in and will help John with inspections, or take over inspections while he's going out to do an investigation or do other inspections. Again, we have a lot of building going on in town, we have a major apartment complex that paid a very big building permit fee, and they, they pay that fee because they expect services for that fee, and one of them is, they need the fire marshal there many times a day, a week.
Yes.
If not five, at least three.
If I can add to that, we were just up there two days ago, doing inspection, working with the, with the general contractor, going through, talking about the sprinkler systems going in with the piping, with the doors, and one of the things that, that I identified when we were up there, is that there's the door that separates the garage from the living space, it's a fire-rated door which protects the occupants in the event of a fire during the night. When the building goes up, there will be sprinklers, but the door and the wall still have to meet a rating to protect you from, if there's an incident in your garage. When we were doing the inspection, I took a look at the door, and it didn't appear any kind of rating tag on it. Any, any door that's a fire door has a, has a tag on it that tells you that it is a fire door and what the rating is. I brought it to the general contractor's attention, they thought it maybe was just an oversight, that maybe the label had fallen off. I had some conversations with our building official about it, and they did some research, the contractor did, and I had an email, actually last night, about quarter to eight, stating that they found the wrong door was installed.
Hmm.
Again, many units, this could be 150 times that. It just happened to be because we were up there, you know, policing it, and being able to go in and getting eyes on it. It's not something that we can rely on the contractor to do, they're, they're trying to go as quickly as they can, because the quicker they build the building, the quicker they're occupied, and they obviously make money.
Terrific.
Our job is to make sure that they're built correctly, because we're going to have to, once they build it, they're gonna be gone, we're gonna live, our residents are going to live there, and I wanna make sure that it's constructed ahead of time so that things that are installed are caught before they're covered up and we don't identify the problems.
So going line by line through your budget, the real increase I was just pointing out is about $15,000 to your part-time fire marshals, and then really the only other thing that sticks out is the training, and of course, that's critical to make sure that our fire marshals are part-time and full-time, you, you're going to a class soon, are always updated on the latest codes and requirements of your occupation, of your job, and really, that's, that's it. We did reduce the miscellaneous items by almost, well, by about $5,000, and I think that's because there was some, oh, there was IT.
There was IT that went into...
Okay. Thank you. I was going to say, because it was split between your budget and, and that one. That's that on, on that, on that item. You, do you, you started making the presentation about, I was needing to split this budget in half, or not in half, literally, but the need to probably break out the emergency management part of this budget.
Right. And I think, you know, as you look through it, especially as you look through the backups, you'll notice that in a lot of the wording, there are, there are things that are inside of individual lines, which are partially fire marshal, partially emergency management related. So I think what we need to do is call that data and, and really kind of separate those two budgets to effectively show what we're spending money on. You know, understanding again, institutionally, when you had the fire marshal who was the E M D, it was one pot of money that was used in one building to, to, you know, to fund everything that was being done. We've already recognized there are certain areas where it's a deficiency to have it done this way. The first being inside of his part-time line for part-time fire marshals. We also have an area for the staffing that I have for the E O C, for E O C related events. Those should really be separate again, so you have that demonstratable, this is the true cost of fire marshal, the true cost of the E O C emergency management. Because right now they're all mixed together. I think as you, you know, just to kind of go over, there, there really are no increases on the emergency management side. But as you look through this, you know, the budget, you do have your wages for the administrative assistant. We are currently working through that, that position to, to better hone what that person is doing because it has been a, a cross-department job. We're trying to kind of make that much more efficiently operated. You'll notice the deputy director and comms, excuse me, radiation officer, being a millstone town, we have to have somebody that's a radiation officer for, for operations for the E O C. That is a stipend to pay, pay those two people for those positions. And again, everything else I think is pretty self-explanatory. If there's any questions, you know, feel free to ask.
Are there any questions on this budget?
The only thing I'm just going to add is based on Mr. Dwyer or Mr. Way said, I'm going to clean my dryer vents this weekend.
I'm in good business to get in.
Considering again, the large amount of building that's going on, do you think that we should reinstate the full-time deputy?
I, I think our new fire marshal has got a good handle. He's brought, you've met a couple of the new fire marshals. They've come in in the last couple of meetings that we've appointed. They're, they're strong characters and with a lot of background. I think, I think you're handling it pretty well. We can increase the part-time budget a little bit more if, 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 you know, if you're getting behind. But I think enhancing it now and, and we, we talk a lot. So John, John's coming in wanting to enhance the services and, and requirements or meet the requirements of the state. But it's a big, big paradigm shift, as they used to say. But we, John and I have a conversation about once a day about eating that elephant one bite at a time. So we're, again, we're making progress that, that we're enhancing the budget a little bit and if it's not enough this time next year, then we'll enhance it some more. But I think he's got a good handle on it and I'd, I'd like to stay clear from adding another full-timer onto the, the town's employment rolls.
I do have one more question. There was in the back of your, the budget pages for this, you had potential annual revenue. Are you looking at increasing the proposed, the fees? Is that why that's in here? It looked like we had revenue of maybe twenty-five hundred budgeted.
I believe again, some of this was put together prior to my arriving. That might have been for re-inspection fees.
Oh, that's what it is.
If we have to go back more than like two or three times for that, I believe that's what it is.
We did increase some of the fees, burn, burn fees.
Probably burning permits and also maybe plant, plant reviews.
Yes.
Sprinkler reviews that, I believe that's what it's speaking to.
And last-minute reviews, if they're calling within, you know, a couple of days of the.
Last-minute inspection, again, my, the goal of my office to make sure that we, that we're, have them on our radar for, to, to prevent that kind of thing.
I think that's what that's from. Anna, would you agree with that? Twenty-five hundred dollars in revenue, is that what that's from? The fees?
The fees, yeah.
Okay.
That's with the, all the latest fees. That's what we're expecting.
Yes.
Okay. And what, what should we do with this last page in the back, the proposed fees?
Was that from the prior year?
It's what the fees are currently.
Proposed fees are what they are?
This is set up is what the current annual revenue is and what the potential annual revenue could be. But I, I think there's a typo on that because it, I mean, it's going from seventeen hundred to seventeen thousand.
Yeah, if you added all those potential revenues, it doesn't come up to seventeen thousand.
Well, if you multiply twenty-five times CO inspection, then it, because twenty-five times fifty, well, no, that still doesn't, yeah.
It's just twelve fifty.
Well, the zeros above could be we didn't have to review too many fire alarm systems for a fifty thousand square foot building either. It's probably not that many in town.
Hmm, right, true. Yeah, no.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I have just one question. The radio maintenance contract, is that just for public safety and fire marshal?
Yes, well, it's, it's town-wide, so public works is on the same system. So basically it is our contract with our vendor, which is Utility Communications, to upkeep our entire radio system, including the tower sites.
Do they do the fire departments too?
They do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's the end of our reviews tonight.
All right, then I'll make a motion to adjourn the.
Special meeting.
The special meeting. Second.
Motion to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we keep going? I'll call the regular meeting to order. It's eight oh three. We've had, we've just, we've had the pledge of allegiance. We have any additional agenda consent items? If not, any delegations? If not, approval of the minutes?
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of February fifth, two thousand twenty as submitted. Second.
Motion second, any corrections, comments? Thanks, John. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of February nineteenth, twenty twenty, the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We, we put this on the budget in case, I don't know, in case, well, we actually had something else on the, on agenda. So then we were going to go back to deliberations if necessary, if that was going to carry over, but we didn't. So ex officio reports an out, folks, and you can feel free to keep them short.
I'll make mine really brief. Parks and Rec, they had to adjust their parking fees this year because we said parking fees, so the state has said since there's a tax on using municipal lots, there's a tax on the fee to buy your season or day parking pass at McCook's now, so the rates are going to go up a little bit for that. Walk-ins and rental for the pavilion and so forth are not affected by that, but what was forty dollars this year will be forty-five. Last year forty-eight dollars will be forty-five this year because the state wants tax money from us. That's it.
Great. Going down that way? Any ex officio, Mark?
Uh, no, planning was canceled. There's a meeting Thursday for a building commission. I won't be able to make it because, believe it or not, my son's going to high school and it's a high school thing, so if anyone's available to cover.
Your son's going into high school?
Next year, so it's like.
Wow.
Parents and bring your kid.
Brace yourself.
I know. So if anyone can cover. Uh, it's just for building, it's, I think Thursday at six thirty or six. I can get you that.
Can't make it.
Yeah, anyways, that's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing new.
Okay, and then Paul?
Public Safety Building Vision Committee did vote to authorize the town to go out to bid for the remodeling rehabilitation, based on the hundred percent design sketches is for the, from the design. It is close to be going out to bid. I would think within, by the end of next week is the target date to have it out before, on it before that date. Town and the architect are working through a couple of final details. Looks like it'll go out then with a request for response by the end of March with the bids. And with a bidders conference somewhere in between, the date's not set, but probably about two weeks into the bid process or we'll ask for any bidders questions to come in. And then, uh, once the bids come in, I'm going to recommend to the vision committee, we have a, a small subcommittee, open the bids. That'll be a public session, we'll open the bids. And then we'll bring them to the full vision committee to make a recommendation on which contractor to select. And once we have those final bids and the selected one, we will have the total cost for the project. I shouldn't say that. We will have the construction cost for the project, adding on the other things that had been spent, the design costs and other things. We'll have a, a final number that town will put together to bring to this board for our consideration. With a recommendation from the vision committee as far, as what we think should be included or not included going forward. We'll have a chance to make that decision here jointly. And then in all likelihood, we'll be in a position to pass along something to the board of finance because I have to predict it's going to be more than the five million that's already predicted. But until it comes here, it's, we'll find that out exactly. So we're close to going out, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So as it stands now, as it goes out to bid, what is the status of the second floor of the building?
Second floor of the building will not be occupied. It will have the I T room on the second floor only. And it'll have the elevator shaft installed. I don't know yet if we'll recommend putting, right now it doesn't appear we're going to recommend putting the elevator in. We are asking for a cost of that, so if the vision committee decides not to put it in and this board does, or the board of finance does, at least we'll know what it would cost to actually install an elevator.
So when you say that the second floor would be used for the I T, does that mean people working up there or does that just mean the mechanics?
It'll be the equipment, which people will have access to be able to service as necessary, but it will not be an occupied space. Separate room with ventilation and environmental controls based on the heat load from the equipment and a separate non-water fire suppressant system in case there's a problem with the equipment.
Well, I think that committees probably already made their decision, but we asked for the six million dollars and I think that that's what we need to do the job and I think that's what we should get. That's what we should hold for. So that I think I just, it's just troubling.
This will be coming back to us for that final, that final push. So we, we're just a, a month or two away from that and as we go out to bid and four weeks of that and getting back to the vision committee, we, we would see this in, in, probably in April at some point. So as we get closer to budgets, uh, final budgets will be segueing back over to the building to get that project going. So, um, end of April, beginning of May. Okay.
Paul, how long will the bids be open for?
Four weeks.
Four weeks. It's four weeks.
Okay, I don't have an ex officio, but before you do your final remarks, we had quite a bit of discussion the last meeting over the tree warden. And it seems like a small point, but I don't think it is because I think it goes to the philosophy of the town and supporting townspeople. And we have a business that has served the town for many years and done very well by the town. They are a business that pays taxes to the town. They're residents of the town. They pay taxes on their equipment. And if it caught, if their charge is a little bit more, we get more money back than a business that's out of town that comes in and leaves the town. They've served, I think, the town for at least thirty years. And I think the board of, the board of finance passed a resolution that there needs to be three bids abided.
That was us.
Uh, was that?
That was us.
That was us and the board of finance group.
It was their recommendation.
It was their recommendation. And I, at that point, I felt very strongly that a local business should be given preference. And that did not win. But in this particular case, it bothers me because they're an ongoing business, they're a town business. I don't think they should have to compete considering what they give back to the town. And there's a section of the constitution that's called expos facto. And it says that you can't be punished for something that wasn't illegal when you did it. So to transpose that to this situation, they're an ongoing business. They, uh, were a bit of business prior to the installation of the three-bid policy. And I think that we need to be looking out for our own local people and our own local businesses. And I think, as I said, they pay taxes on all their equipment, which we get money from. They pay property taxes as opposed to some other company that comes in, does a job, cuts down the trees and leaves. So that's my speech of conscience.
Thank you. It's been heard. Any other, um, ex officio reports? We're good? We're good, we're good. I'll, 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 I'll not have a report tonight so I can move to in German.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night.
Good night.